Councilmember Haroff.
Here.
Councilmember Chu.
Here.
Vice Mayor Morrison.
Here.
And Mayor Hillmer.
Here. If you're able, would you please rise and join us in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice to see you all this evening. The first item on this evening's agenda is public comment. Are there members of the public that are here this evening that would like to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am. We'll allow three minutes per speaker.
First, I have to get this working. Sit down. All right. Cindy Winter-Greenbrier, I'd like to express my appreciation for being named Citizen of the Year. It was a big surprise. Never did it occur to me. I simply set to work on what, from personal experience, I thought should be done. Not all of it, but much of it, Measure B. Now it's a pleasure to see B moving forward. Combined with the new Bonner Bridge, in five years' time, Larkspur will be a changed city. I commend the City Council, our City Manager, our DPW Director, for their vision and their efforts to move these projects forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy, very much. Are there other members of the public that would like to speak to items not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Geral Paige, San Antonio. On November 16th last year, I sent each of you an email documenting concerns about flood control. To those of you who thanked me, gentlemen, I appreciate the acknowledgement. I stated conditions remained unchanged since 1989, but that was a misstatement. Conditions have remained unchanged since 1972. The Army Corps of Engineers has evaded responsibility for remediation of a flawed project for 46 years. No one has provided the research and analysis to prove the creeks and channel can be made to perform to the county's concepts and aspirations for grant-funded upstream projects. No one can explain whether the cost-benefit ratio for Unit 4 and the attendant remediation of Units 3, 2, and 1 will meet standards for national economic development and congressional mandate. It is alarming that floodplain enhancements at the College of Marin have disappeared. These flood improvement measures were meant to be part of Ross' Unit 4 project. Not until March 27th, 2018, did Tanya confirm that the college creek enhancements have been removed. Whether those remedial modifications are returned for future consideration must be answered because they were intended to add reliability and increase capacity to stormwater management of the entire county program. We tend to think that floods are only about water, but since 1987, the county has known that the problem with the core channel is in the turbulence and roughness caused by sediment in the moving water. This is sediment present in the water at the time of flooding. In order to correct downstream channel dysfunction, transported, not deposited, sediment must be accounted for from Fairfax to the bay. The sediment load from upland sources carried by the creeks and core channel is historic and well documented. It would be unwarranted and unrealistic to assume sediment will decrease in the future. The question remains, what happens to downstream areas when upstream projects exceed channel capacity? Attendant-induced flooding is not an attribute. I urge you to demand answers lest Larkspur become a victim. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments and all your attention to this, Ms. Page. Are there other members of the public that would like to speak to items not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item on the agenda as a presentation by the Chamber of Commerce. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm slow.
Not at all.
Hi, my name's Maxine Ladlaw, and I'm here about an unsafe traffic issue that we have on Villa Lacumbre, Eliseo, Brentano, and Hermosa. For quite a while now, it just keeps getting worse and worse, and to the point where you can't get out of your car sometimes, you can't pull out of your driveway, and the speeding also on top of it. You know, people trying to detour from the highway to get into San Rafael or a different way of getting on the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge. We've started a petition, and we're dealing with only about 180 households, and we're only taking one signature from each household. And so far, I've got about 45 more households to go to that I still haven't gotten signatures from, and so there's probably going to be a few hundred signatures, you know, when we finally, you know, get through with that. The reason I'm here is to get on the agenda, because that's what I'm told that I have to do, come in here, speak, and then to get onto the agenda of the council to see if there's something we can do about this. We've already been working with DPW, you know, with ticketing, and we went to a meeting where we heard quite a bit about traffic calming in San Antonio, which really doesn't apply to Villa Lacumbre and the part of Greenbrier because, you know, of the hells we have and the blind curves. And I don't know what else to say. It's just a very dangerous situation, and we're all really very unhappy about it. And it looks like it's going to be very close to a majority of households that are going to sign, you know, so that's why I'm here. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Please.
Just for the benefit of the council, members of the public may not be aware, the concerns of residents in Greenbrier about traffic on Villa Lacumbre have been heard loud and clear by the staff. The Department of Public Works, with cooperation from Centralman and Police Authority, have been studying the traffic volumes on Villa Lacumbre. We recently held a public workshop for residents to come and attend and discuss their concerns and the solutions they might be interested in. The public works staff is analyzing what the options are and measuring the extent of the problem. There isn't anything to place on the agenda to bring to you yet because all of these possible solutions to traffic issues require analysis before we can make any sort of recommendation on what the appropriate measures are. But I want to assure the council that we are interested in this issue, we are looking at this issue, and when we have completed the analysis, we will, if it's appropriate, bring something to the City Council. It might be quite possible that the Director of Public Works and the Police Chief can implement those solutions without legislative action, but we're just not there yet. But we are aware of the problem and want to make sure you know that.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm wondering how long that process will take. You know, that you did have the card count by the scripts later across the building, and you had digital boxes that recorded speed.
We really need you to speak into the microphone. If you please leave your contact information, they'll let you know what you win and...
I think they have it.
Well, then, there you go.
I will leave it.
So we'll get in touch with you when they're ready to...
Okay, so then, don't say what I was going to say, then?
Please.
Oh, okay. So I'm wondering how long it'll take to get back to us because it just, you know, walking around and collecting signatures, I've heard many, many people say, oh, I went there and tried to get stuff done five years ago. I went there and tried to get stuff done two years ago. And it just sort of just gets, I don't know, maybe put on the back burner or something, and everything calms down, everybody, you know, just goes their, you know, merry way, and nothing happens. I mean, it's like every year, it just gets, it just gets worse and worse. We did go to a meeting, and we were, at the meeting, we were going to hear the results of the car counting strips, which we didn't get. We were going to hear the results of the digital box that records the speed of the cars and the time of day, that, you know, they're speeding, and we didn't get that information either. So I guess maybe this is all getting cumulative. I mean, I'm wondering when, when might we be able to get the results?
I'll stay in the loop, and we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Are there other members of the public that would like to speak to items that are not on this evening's agenda?
Hi, I'm Ross Hasselstein of San Antonio. I was here at the last meeting.
You might want to tilt the mic up so we can pick it up.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Ross Hasselstein, and I live in San Antonio. I came to the last meeting and thanked this council for having passed something in 2014 requesting that the flood fees be progressed as a, or the expenditure be progressed with cost-benefit plans or analysis. I see a slight change in where we're going. I can say, just to update everybody, maybe in the audience, that we're going to collect about $57 million in flood fees over the course of 20 years, being 10 passed and 10 going forward. We only have about $22 million left for the next 10 years, and staff costs at the county are currently running $1.6 million. I think there's a big sense in the community that nobody can really get their hands around this thing and help change the direction on it. And what is the mechanism for that to happen? I know myself, when I was on the Flood Committee in San Antonio, I signed all the paperwork related to the Brown Act, and that essentially restricted me from talking to anybody who had a lot of interest in it, which was everybody on the Flood Committee. The Brown Act may restrict you from talking to other members of your own council about what's happening with the flood fee, but in my view, it doesn't restrict you from talking to any of the members on any other councils or the at-large members about what's going on and where this project's going. In essence, it's really been 10 years of chasing a big dig project. We're going to re-engineer the valley and make magic happen, and we burned through $35 million in that idea. Excuse me, I always get nervous. I think we need to change the simple matters, and we have to figure out very, very carefully how we're going to spend that $22 million. I believe there's limited opportunity to deflect this issue in a new direction, and I think what it's really going to have to do is have conversations across town councils between all the elected officials. I invite you to come to the next Flood Zone 9 meeting. Dan Hillmer is one of the best members on that committee and has constantly asked good questions, but there's a huge tide of just complete silliness of 10 years going on, and we collectively need to make good decisions about what we're doing with remaining funds. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and your consistent attention to this. Are there other members of the public that would like to ask, comment, or make comments or ask questions regarding items not on the agenda this evening? Thank you. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is a presentation by the... Oh, yes, sir. Please come to the microphone. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? If so, would you please let me know and raise your hand? Okay, so you'll be the last speaker on this item.
Okay, I just wanted to reiterate the issue that was raised by Maxine, that Villa Lacumbre the traffic issue is real, and I have serious concern, grave concern, with the safety of the public, the residents, the kids who want to ride their bike to school and back. And it's nothing new. This issue has been on the books for quite some times, and as Maxine mentioned, people have been approaching the city, asking for help, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping this time, the city is going to take more interest in addressing this safety, major safety issue because Villa Lacumbre has essentially has become a, I don't know, fifth lane for the freeway, both northbound and southbound. In the morning, people are commuting, going south on Villa Lacumbre, and in the evening, they're going north, using Villa Lacumbre as the fifth or sixth lane for Highway 101. It is a serious issue. It's a safety issue first, and second is quality of life. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Last call for speakers on items not on the agenda. All right. The next item is a presentation by the Larkspur Chamber of Commerce and an update by Vicki Kung, our executive director.
Ah, thank you. Hi.
Hi, Vicki.
Hi, Mayor Hillmer. Members of the City Council, thank you so much for having us make this update. The last time we spoke was in November, so I'm going to quickly recap what we've been doing since we saw you. First thing we did was, this was in progress when we saw you, it was in the mail, we've got the results now. We mailed 1,500 brochures to Larkspur business license holders. What we wanted to do was reach people who may not have a physical presence. I go door-to-door, I meet and greet, I look for membership, hear what people have to say, hear what local businesses have to say, but if somebody doesn't have a physical presence, it was more difficult, so we dropped this mailer to 1,500 addresses, and the result was, we got members that signed up from that. So that was, that was a big success. We had 2,500 printed, the extra thousand have been distributed throughout the community. You guys have some here, we've been passing them out to businesses, and then now, when we go walkabout to the different neighborhoods, we have a way to reach out. It's a great brochure for the chamber, so that's been working very well. Concurrently with that, basically did A/B testing. Do we reach people via snail mail, or do we reach them digitally? So we also ran a digital campaign that was a, with SF Gate, where we've had a lot of success with digital campaigns, and it was to reach out to small office, home office, people who don't read the paper, people who are not analog, people who do everything digitally. And the result of that was, it had a click-through rate of 8%, which is consistent with its, the standard SF Gate rate, but I felt it was too low. So we did a 30-day experiment and said, okay, nobody directly joined the chamber because of that, so we're going to pivot and use the rest of those impressions as a member benefit, shop Larkspur. So we did a heavy push on shop Larkspur to remind people that if you're going to spend Christmas dollars, spend them in the community, and our click-through rate on that was 16% or double what they expected it to be. So in terms of digital advertising, it was a real halo effect for our members. We drove traffic to the chamber website to then drive it to member websites, so we were pleased with how that turned out. And now we know digital advertising is not the way our business community rolls, and that was good to know, or at least in this form. So it was a good test. That we'll continue to do the mailings because now that we've done the A/B testing, we have results, and we know how people like to respond. Upcoming, we have the wine stroll on July 21st. I know you guys have seen this data before. When we moved the wine stroll from Pico to Perrys, that block there, and limited host locations to chamber members, not only was it a great membership drive for us, but traffic increased 35%. We had 500, about 500 attendees, which was a real improvement over previous years. It's grown organically, but we've started to do more outreach, more posters, again, getting out there, and having these member businesses see such a big benefit, it continues to be a good marketing opportunity and member, potential member outreach and recruitment for us. So it's going to be July 21st. We've got about eight wineries signed up so far, which puts us already at three-quarters of our target. We like to get about a dozen, and we'll again be doing walkabout and be using that as a membership recruitment and also renewal. It's not enough to join once, you have to join every single year, but like, you know, it's $10 a month, can probably make it work. So that's coming up. Something else we're going to be running is a successful, that campaign that we ran last year, it was the Story Studio, and this is advertorial, again, SF Gate, and it was 500,000 guaranteed impressions over the course of 30 days. So what we, digital only, so what we did was, I created a story about the five neighborhoods of Larkspur to let everyone know what that, what the flavor of Larkspur is, you know, with a focus on chamber members. And we did videos of them, and we interviewed them, and then that's Primalink. So all of the chamber members that participated, and even those that don't, because we listed everyone that was a member, will now be able to use that for their own marketing ongoing because our engagement and the time spent was way higher than the norm, and we felt we got good response for that. We're doing it again in the fall, and this time it's going to be the different times, types of ways that you can shop in Larkspur. You can spend money. There'll be lodging, there'll be transportation, there'll be retail, and we're going to aim that at the fall so we can use that as a push into the holiday for our members. So that will be coming up. And then something that was proposed to the chamber as a city-chamber partnership is launching a new, a new event, and we discussed, you know, what's the next neighborhood that could really use some love and some attention, and it's North Magnolia. We've got a lot of traction in gaining new members there. They'd like an event. We'd like to give them an event. So this is in the planning stages. I've gone, again, door-to-door, talked to all of the members, a lot of prospective members, and they're excited about having an event. It would be a Saturday. So like the wine stroll, it's going to be much more public-oriented. So right now, we're in conversation with the members and prospective members about what works for them, and it's everything from what's the theme to, you know, if it's a Saturday, win on a Saturday, what works for you. So when all of that, when we have sort of everyone's collective thinking, and they've already got ideas, you can put the tent there, you can serve that over there, so they're really engaged in it. When we've got all of that together, we'll do some pricing, we'll make a pitch, and we'll present a proposal to you so you guys can look at that and see how we roll. So this is still preliminary, but it's something that, again, Dan Schwartz suggested and we think is a great idea. And further forward, the chamber really reinforces the value of our city-chamber partnership. It allows us to explore, you know, you guys funded the first of the wine strolls, and that's turned out to be great. We're hoping this becomes a similar kind of a thing. Other benefits, there will be a chamber Facebook page. Regardless of any Facebook controversy, it is still a powerful marketing tool, and the people that want to be on it will be on it. So we've engaged a Facebook consultant who's helping us create something that will be a member benefit, and the way it works is there will be a private group that chamber members only can post on, and then those postings that are appropriate to go out into the wild will be approved by me, and one of the board members will be editor. So we'll be able to make sure that everything that's released onto the Facebook page is appropriate content that's member-focused, but this gives them a way that they don't have right now to tell people about sales, about special events that they may be having, about special things that's happening in their world, as well, going to improve the calendar, going to ask members now if we can help share their good news. Again, do you have a sale coming up? Do you have an event? Do you have, you know, an author event, a reading, you know, whatever it is? We want to help amplify our members' messages by helping distribute that, so that's coming up this year. I wanted to do a quick recap, where we were, where we are, and I used April 1st because that was really when we sort of started going. I know our fiscal year is the same as, tracks with yours, but on April 1st, 2016, we had nothing but an active board. We had no members, we had no functional website, we had nothing. Two years later, yes, we've got 60 members and lots of things. If you could refer to the printed page, I apologize, to get it all on one page, it's almost One Point type, but that's in the packet that you've got there. And I wanted to just go over what we did. So the end of 20, one year later, 2017, we had a functional website, and again, all of this information, the stuff that you guys have seen through the presentations as we've gone. One year in, we had 30 members. As executive director, I was getting a feel for how I spend my time. So the breakdown on the hours, I spend about 45 hours a month, and the breakdown on how I spend that time is here for you. The TOT funding has been $35,000. This is how we spend your money, on websites, on me, on outreach, member outreach, on printing, things like that. We had a lot of exclusive member benefits. We now have a marketing plan and execution, and I go back and quarterly, I tweak the budget on the marketing plan, I tweak everything. The wine stroll, we have bylaws. We grew up a lot between April 1, 16 and 17. So brings us to April 1, 2018, we're now at 60 members. The website continues to evolve. I added a tourism section, which increased both the website traffic and reduced the number of calls I get from people asking us to send the printed Larkspur tourism brochure, which of course doesn't exist. So we've been working with other agencies to help get the word out about Larkspur, so that's been a great assist on the website. Again, it breaks down, I've continued to refine sort of what I do and how I do it. TOT funding has remained the same. We've added member benefits, like the Story Studio, like the Facebook thing will be coming up. And again, budget, the mixers, all of that continues on. We run quarterly board meetings, and so I've always got new information for the board, so they're always, their input is, like yours, very valuable. So moving forward to projected for 2019, we're adding the calendar to the website. I don't think it needs a lot of tweaks at the moment. We hope for 80 members. I'm learning a lot about the difference between somebody joining and somebody rejoining, so I'm spending more time figuring out how we can continue to ensure current members that their membership is of value. So that's been great, and that allows me to continue to look for new opportunities, for new marketing opportunities, new events. One thing that's changed is that I will be moving out of the area, so as you all know, so I'll be reducing my hours, I'll be 100% digital, remote. The chamber board have asked me to stay on and work remotely, since 80% of what I did was done digitally anyway. We've hired an assistant director who will be the person on the ground. She's here tonight, and you'll see her next time when she'll be giving the presentation. So we're dividing up those responsibilities. So there will still be a person on the ground to go door-to-door, to do outreach, to, you know, there will still be a face to the chamber. TOT funding, we, I penciled in $35,000. When we get to that point, we'll know whether it's the same or more or less, but I'm moving ahead with it being the same number. More member benefits, we'll do another Story Studio. Wine stroll, we'll hope for 600 people, and again, more host members, most, more members on the block. If it really goes well, I hope to maybe 19 or 20, extend it back up Magnolia where it used to be so we can really spread it out. We're getting more members back up there, so we've got a lot of good goals for what's going to happen with the wine stroll. And then launch the North Magnolia event. That's still to be determined, but somewhere between now and next April, we hope we've got that under our belt. So I know that may need, that piece in front of you may need a little more digesting, but you know how to reach me on email if you have questions, and so I'd like to say, thank you. Again, we so value the partnership we have with you, the great ideas, the support, I mean, everything in, you know, you guys launched my PowerPoint for me. I mean, it's wonderful. It's just, there's a lot of support for the chamber, and I, you know, we really feel it, and we really appreciate it. So I can't tell you how much I've enjoyed working with all of you, and again, I'm just going to be an email away, and so, thank you, and thanks for the chance to continue to work with you all.
Thank you, Vicki. Are there questions for Vicki from the council?
I just have one. Vicki, nice job. Wow, you've been busy.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, you should, you should know how we spend your money, right?
North Magnolia, the event, it's exciting you're doing that. Has any, have the businesses come to you and mentioned about having a sign put up saying this is North Magnolia? Has that ever come up in any conversation with any of the businesses?
It has not.
Has not?
No, no. I mean, yay, if we can.
Right.
But no, it's more, it's very event-specific. Where's our event? Where's our wine stroll? Where's our farmer's market?
More beer?
Yeah. So the event is definitely something on everyone's mind.
Super.
But I'm sure if you offered them a sign, they would say, of course.
It has come up, I just wanted to say that to you. All right, thanks.
Oh, yeah, not for me.
Okay.
Any other questions? No, all right.
Councilmember Chu.
Not a question, but I think your presence...
Not a question, but I think your presentation just shows how much you've really brought Chamber of Commerce in the last two years. So I want to thank you for that. You've done a phenomenal job.
Thank you so much.
Glad you're staying on board, because that was going to be one of my questions, you know. You know, who's going to be able to do as much as you have at this point, but it sounds like you're staying around.
Yes, I think we've got it all arranged. If, like I said, it's one-point type, and I'm sorry for that, but I wanted to fit it all on one page so you could see. We've got the breakdown going, and it's going to be very communicative. So I think it's going to be, you will, you will still feel our presence, trust me.
Great, thank you.
And I'm only an email away. Yeah, all right. Thank you again.
Are there members of the public that would like to comment or ask questions of Vicki? Yes, sir.
I just, come to the microphone.
Okay. I, I'm just reading the fine print here on number four. And on the consent calendar, item 4.5, the exercise of the Joint Powers Association?
We're not to that part of the agenda yet.
I know, but I wanted to remove it from the consent calendar. Do I have to do that to talk about it? Because I notice it's on later, but I...
When we get to the consent calendar, we'll ask for your comments or questions.
Okay. Do you want me to sit down until then?
If you don't mind.
Okay.
Are there other questions or comments regarding the Chamber of Commerce presentation? Thank you very much, Vicki. As I said earlier, we benefit a great deal from all the work that you do for us. And it has come a long way from really a, an unorganized effort to one that's, I think, creating collective benefit for the merchants and the city. I just want you to know the council appreciates it very much. All right, we'll move on to the, to the next item, which is the consent calendar. Are there items on the consent calendar that council members would like to remove to discuss further?
I think we kind of heard from a member of the public, they would like that one item pulled, so we can do that.
And that was 4.5?
Yes.
All right. So we'll remove 4.5 for a further discussion. Are there any other items to remove? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the balance of consent, of the consent calendar with the exception of agenda item 4.5. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. All right. Item 4.5 is initiating the bond financing process for the Public Infrastructure Improvement Program related to Measure B and adoption of a resolution authorizing execution of a joint exercise of powers agreement with Larkspur Parking Authority to create the Larkspur Public Financing Authority. Mr. City Manager, may we have a staff report on that? And please, if you might, outline how this relates to agenda item 10.1. Is there a connection between the two?
Yes, sir. It's, Mr. Mayor, there is a connection between an agenda item later on the agenda this evening. This evening, the council's being asked to take a number of steps, both with this item and the subsequent item, to put in place a structure that will allow you to pursue out in the market bonds for the purpose of financing the road repair program. This is the work that was authorized by Measure B, the sales tax measure that took effect on April 1st of this year. And the city essentially with this action is empowering the staff to work with bond council and our municipal advisor to put together the packages that will go out to solicit proposals for the bond financing, in concert with the actions that you're taking to create a financing authority that will sort of serve as a vehicle. And as we'll discuss later or now, I don't know how the council would want to do the presentation at this point, the financing authority and the city are proposed to enter into what's called a lease-leaseback arrangement that we've talked about in the past as a financing mechanism. It's a common mechanism that communities all through Marin and the other parts of state use as a means to protect but use assets of the city as leverage to go out and get lease, what are called lease revenue bonds, which is what you're authorizing us to go solicit. And then pay them back through a process where essentially the financing authority is leased one of our assets by the city, and then in turn charges us rent back as the city. And that rents used to pay the, the revenue bonds. I have a longer presentation I could do now. It was for the later agenda item. They're sort of tied together, and I don't know what you'd want to do, Mr. Mayor. It's kind of choppy, because we do need to convene at the later time as the financing authority, so...
If it was staff's intention to make the presentation during item 10.1, I would ask the council if that's okay, if we stick to that plan?
To wait for later.
To wait for later. Okay?
I'm, I'm with that.
All right.
I should note that Mark Pressman from Wolf Hanson is present. He's your municipal advisor. And then Brian Quint, who's your bond council, is also present and available and far more intelligent and equipped to answer detailed questions about the type of financing that we're proposing. You'll recall from past discussions that you directed staff to obtain the services of Mr. Pressman and to begin to look at what were the best options for doing the financing that needs to be done, at the magnitude that needs to be done. And Mr. Pressman's recommendation is that this is, is consistent with the city's desire to be careful and conservative with its, its needs and its assets, but also recognizing that at this point to go out in the market and obtain this magnitude of money, this is the appropriate approach for the city.
Would you please clarify the action you're requesting for item 4.5 from the council?
So you're adopting two resolutions. One will essentially authorize bond council and your municipal advisor to now initiate proceedings through the, through the city, through the financing authority to go out and solicit proposals for, for bond financing. And then the second resolution is actually the city's action to join a joint powers authority with our parking authority. And that one, I do have, Jimmy, maybe you better put that diagram up if you can find it, to form the financing authority. So a financing authority is essentially a government entity that consists of at least two other government entities who have the ability to enter into debt or other financing Thank you. That's, that's exactly the one. So the financing authority is a typical vehicle for issuing debt that government agencies use. And it takes a partner, and fortunately, we had a partner on the books. We had the parking authority of the city of Larkspur, which was actually formed back in the 70s and has not been particularly active for several decades, but it exists. You are the board of the parking authority. You are the board of the city. So you would be together, acting as those two entities, forming another entity, which is going to be the Larkspur Public Financing Authority. So the action later on the agenda that we can talk in more detail is actually to have the parking authority agree to the formation. So you're both approving tonight to form this new entity, the parking finance, the public financing authority. You're the board of that entity, too. So you're the board of all these entities. And so in the future, as you take actions related to these different entities, you'll be putting on one hat, taking off the other, and it'll all be listed on the agenda, saying, you know, we're going to now stop as the city council and act as the parking authority, and then we're going to stop and act as the financing authority. If you've ever been to a board of supervisors meeting, this happens constantly during their meetings, because they take, put on and off these hats on a pretty regular basis.
If I might ask you to clarify, maybe with the assistance of the city attorney, that this is all, what, which, what legal structure enables the city council? Or it exists in the state of California and that we are following it?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, there's, there's a body of state law called the Joint Exercise of Powers Act. Larkspur is already a member of a number of what we typically refer to as JPAs. There are hundreds of JPAs all over the state. A number of them are financing authorities exactly like this, where state law authorizes a city to form a second entity that's, that is a legal entity of limited function. In this case, it's the parking authority. And then state law additionally authorizes the city and that limited-function entity to join together to form a third entity, which is the JPA. And the JPA is then used to, strictly for the purposes of issuing debt. And it's a very standard, very common approach throughout the state, and it's, it is authorized by the Joint Exercise of Powers Act.
And this would be consistent with the city's expressed intention for Measure B?
Yes.
All right. Anything further in the staff report for this item?
Only that this is the first of a number of steps and a number of opportunities for the council to make decisions as we go through the process of evaluating what our financing options are. Mr. Pressman's worked up some rough numbers, but until we go out into the market and see what, you know, hear, hear back from possible lenders, we don't know that we're on the mark. You'll have an opportunity to look at what's proposed and make decisions. And in fact, we have this process calendared out for meetings in May, meetings in June, meetings in July, as we work our way to completion of the process, with the goal that we have the money in hand entering the next fiscal year so that we can put that money to work for the taxpayers and get our road program launched.
And please give me the, the resolution numbers.
We have Resolution 2118 and 2218.
All right. Are there questions of the city manager regarding this agenda item from council members?
Just one real quick question. On, on the parking authority, that's an existing entity.
It is.
And are there any constraints imposed upon the parking authority in terms of the types of activities that it can participate in? I mean, I assume you've looked at this, and this is, this is an appropriate form of activity for that particular entity to engage in?
It is an appropriate activity for it to enter into. And actually, parking authorities are a popular vehicle to serve as the partner with a city council.
That was my guess.
As a financing authority member.
I just wanted to get that out on the record, because it, obviously, it is an existing entity that was formed with something in mind, not this necessarily.
Yeah, a typical activity for a parking authority is working with the community to try to finance parking opportunities throughout the community. So financing and debt structures related to parking issues, public parking issues, are a typical activity of a parking authority.
Okay. And this isn't, we're not, we're not going beyond what that entity is capable legally of doing.
That's right.
And then just, just a kind of a technical question. Once, assuming that we go ahead and have the resolutions passed tonight that allow the formation of the public financing authority, will there be any role for the parking authority to play on a going-forward basis, really, as a separate entity?
In this particular process?
The financing authority will be able to act then on its own.
That's right.
So...
This, this process...
This is a forming, this is an entity formation process.
Is pretty much the end of the parking authority's role. There may be some procedural meetings related to it. You know, we have a parking authority, and we haven't utilized it in a long time.
Right.
And this is, this process sort of reminded me about that. So we may be having other discussions, because it is a useful tool in and of itself.
Right. But just to, just to be clear, what, when, once we have these mechanisms in place, and when we're talking about the financing issues, we'll be talking in the context of the public financing authority. That's why we'll be putting that hat on.
That's right. In the future, almost all of your significant dealings on the issue of the financing will be under, with, with the hat of the financing authority on.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the activities, past, present, and future of the parking authority of the city of Larkspur would still take place, but only with a different name?
No.
No, so the parking authority is its own entity, the city is its own entity, and the financing authority is its own entity.
And would, and the parking authority would remain its own entity?
It would remain its own entity.
I thought I heard you say earlier it would go away.
No, it will play very little role in this particular financing moving forward.
I want to be clear that if we decide to conduct activities as the parking authority...
Nothing precludes you from doing that, that you would be doing in this activity.
Thank you.
Right. And just to follow on on that, in fact, if the parking authority were to go away, for some reason, that would create a problem with the financing authority, because then we no longer have an entity that would be participating in the JPA.
That's correct. And we ran into that problem, because for the benefit of the public and the council, a reminder, we already have a different financing authority that's a very limited and focused one that deals with an issue in the Marina neighborhood. The other entity that joined that board, which was you again, was your redevelopment agency. And of course, the state legislated away redevelopment, but allowed us to have the, what's called the successor agency to the redevelopment agency remain as the board member of the Larkspur Marina Financing Authority. So as a reminder, the, the financing authority tool already is something you have used, the city's used for years. And it's just important that we have a partner legally to form it.
Right.
And it's always ideal when that partner's you, because that means that all the decisions are yours.
Are there questions at the city manager on the staff report for this agenda item? Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments regarding this agenda item? Please come forward and tell us who you are and speak into the microphone for the record. Thank you for your patience, sir. We appreciate it.
My name is Steve McClure. I'm on the existing oversight committee, and I'm hoping to be on the successor oversight committee. I realize that this is an ongoing process, and it's going to take several steps to get it to its final conclusion as to the form of the, of the structure of this deal. But clearly, the community is, is pregnant with this deal. Enough decisions have been made to date, so that, like I said, the community is pregnant with this deal. The oversight committee has not been formed. The ballot measure clearly says that the committee will provide oversight in incurring debt. And this is incurring debt, and we don't have any oversight. Furthermore, to have an item like this on a consent calendar, so you have kind of a bulk mentality throwing these things in to consent en masse, when you're actually going to mortgage, not mortgage, but put a lien on the city hall, the fire station, and Piper Park, to me seems bizarre. I think that these things need to be brought out. I think they need to be discussed. And it's not merely a legal thing. It's a, it's a, it's a community involvement thing. This is the community city hall, and it's being mortgaged. Is that a problem? Unlikely. That's not the point. The point is, it's not divulged clearly so people can understand it. And secondly, the oversight committee, which is supposed to be in this chain of command somewhere, hasn't even been formed, and all these steps have been taken that are just, like I said, the community is pregnant with this structure. And they're not aware, and that's pretty much all I have to say. I was just like, I was amazed that this has taken the form it's taken with the timing that it's taken. Like I tell you, I, I agree that debt should be issued. I agree, I voted for the sales tax. That's not the point. The point is, in every... The point is, and everybody talks about transparency, and here you're going to mortgage city hall and you don't tell anybody specifically what's going on. I think that's rather odd. And I, that's about all I have to say.
Would staff like to, to respond?
So I'd like to respond briefly about the consent calendar decision. And then I think it would be helpful if you invite Mr. Pressman and Mr. Quint to clarify how this process works because we're hearing words like mortgage and lien and those are creating false analogies, I think, for the public.
Could we also get a clarification on the role of the oversight committee?
And probably Mr. Woodruff would be the right person to do that for you.
That may be important to lead off.
So it's my decision to place this step on the consent calendar. The reason being, the actions you're taking today are, one, authorization of us to start a process. You're not committed to anything. And two, um, if you don't like the idea of forming the financing authority, it was our assumption that when we do the later agenda item with the parking authority, you would kill it then. And that was the public debate to have. And so we didn't see the necessity of having two public items. And we couldn't calendar them together under one umbrella because you have to actually convene as a parking authority. So we thought, why don't we have the public discussion of all of this under the parking authority's agenda item? And if you were uncomfortable with it then, you would let us know and we wouldn't move forward. And we can't move forward until both the city council and the parking authority board approve the formation of the new JPA, the financing authority. So that was the determination, putting on the consent calendar. And I will let, I think Mr. Pressman should probably speak next and/or Mr. Quint to clarify how this financing mechanism, these mechanisms work and what may be a better description than mortgage or lien.
Well, I want to make sure and get to the role of the oversight committee because...
I thought that was a good finale for Mr. Woodruff.
Okay.
I wasn't forgetting.
The impression has been created that somehow, um, the role of the oversight committee has been short stepped here. And I want to make sure that we clarify that for everybody to understand.
I, I won't forget, Mr. Mayor.
You're up, Mark.
Good evening. I'm Mark Pressman with the Wolf Hansen Company, the city's municipal finance, municipal advisor. Just to clarify, tonight on the city's agenda, you're asked to approve two resolutions. One retains bond counsel to initiate the process and at the same time encourages or allows city staff to proceed with the proceedings. The other resolution is approving formation of the JPA on the city's side. That's all that's happening tonight with, from the city's standpoint. There's no debt being issued, no, no going out in the market, nothing like that. That's all perspective that'll come out in the next month or so. And I assume, put words in Dan's mouth, but I assume that the, the advisory committee will be formed subsequent to this, the approval of these two resolutions and the parking authority approving its resolution. Then we have an entity, the JPA, Public Financing Authority, we have an entity with which to work and we can move forward on that basis. Once that's done, then the, the advisory committee can be formed. Otherwise, there's no need for an advisory committee because there's nothing to work with.
So this creates the, the, the proper structure for the city to, to discuss.
Correct.
And act upon implementation.
That's correct. And I might add that word mortgage is not appropriate here. We will use these assets as security interest for lease and a leaseback, but at no time is the, are the assets at risk by the city at all. We, we can give you multiple examples of that. Even the city of Vallejo had these kind of lease, leaseback arrangements and they went through bankruptcy. City never lost use or control of their assets, the library, fire stations, all that sort of stuff. They never, it, it was uninterrupted.
But those are considerations subsequent to the...
Correct.
Creating the authority.
Correct. I just wanted to sort of clarify that nobody should get worried about the city mortgaging something that they're going to lose by foreclosure if something doesn't happen. That's not, that's not, not the case.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Woodruff?
So first, I just want to say a third time so that it's said a third way, that the actions that are in front of you tonight are preliminary to the actual incurrence of any debt. This is basically setting up a structure that will allow for the city to effectively borrow in order to accelerate the roadway projects that, that were described as part of Measure B. So the reason that a portion of it was on consent and that it's not more widely publicized is that these are preliminary formal steps that are necessary just to set up the structure for it. The actual approval of the issuance of the debt, the lease, leaseback arrangement, that will all be back in front of the city council and the financing, and this council sitting as the financing authority at a later date, very prevalent on the agenda so that it's clear that this is an item that's, that's occurring and, and, you know, that is when the, the discussion about whether or not to incur the debt will actually occur. That said, reading from the Measure B ordinance, it states that if the city council decides to incur debt to accelerate infrastructure projects, in other words, to, to build the roads, the committee, the oversight committee shall additionally review the expenditure of funds for consistency with the purposes of the debt and make recommendations regarding the use thereof. So the, the function of the oversight committee in relation to any debt that the city incurs in order to accelerate the improvement of the roads is regarding the use of the, of the funds that are borrowed and to make recommendations about how they should be used and both, and also to ensure that they're being used solely for the purposes for which the city incurred the debt. So it is not necessary to comply with the Measure B ordinance that the oversight committee be formed prior to you taking these preliminary steps to set up the structure by which you will ultimately be able to borrow those funds.
But could it be interpreted that in any way, I'm not saying that I would interpret it this way, but could it be interpreted in any way that, that the oversight committee advises the city council on whether or not to form these authorities or not?
I do not believe that that was ever something that was discussed. It's certainly not something that was written into the ordinance. It was not in the city attorney's impartial analysis. I, I don't believe that there's a basis in the documents related to Measure B to, to make that interpretation. I think that the role that was always discussed was that if the city council decided to, to borrow to accelerate the projects, which was something that was always discussed, that the role of the committee would be to ensure that the borrowed funds were spent only for the pro, for those projects and to make recommendations about how the funds should be used.
More of an accuracy of accounting function than a policy determination.
Well, and to, and as the Measure C committee did, to make recommendations about how the funds would be used.
So consistency as it was done with Measure C.
Exactly.
And, and I'm glad you talked, just brought that up. It was my understanding that the oversight committee for this, uh, part of the effort following a successful first phase as Measure C would operate in the same manner.
And that was the intent, was that, that the, the idea was that they would perform the same function and that if there were bonds or there's another form of debt issued that they, that that role would be extended to the bond fund. So like with Measure C, when they were looking at the tax revenue and making sure that it was spent for the purposes consistent with the council policy and making recommendations, that they would basically be doing the same thing with the borrowing that occurred with Measure B.
To make sure it's consistent with the council-directed policy.
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Chu.
I'm going to make a more succinct statement. You can say yes or no. Okay. The oversight committee, as you already described, role is to ensure that the money that's spent is done in accordance with the intent, which is to build routes.
Yes.
Okay. And it is not the role of the committee to determine how we achieve the financing?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
So I, I want to make sure your experts gave you expert statements. So that's all on the record. I, I did want to comment as the practical nature of administering all of this. Staff really has valued its relationship with the Measure C oversight committee. And staff's never lost sight of the legal authority of the Measure C oversight committee. But our dialogue tends to extend beyond their legal authority and we value as invested members of our community, their interests in what we're doing. So we've presented the entire road program each year to them and gotten their comments. Those comments don't bear the weight of direction to staff, but we appreciate their feedback because they're invested in our process. We have some very well-educated members of that committee who have financial backgrounds. So I totally anticipate, and I've already spoken to Mr. Pressman, about asking the Measure B committee to join councilmembers Harf and Chu when we brief them as your financial ad hoc committee on what we're doing. And I totally expect to take into account feedback that they provide. So I, I wanted the legalese on the record. I also want to tell you practically, we don't park people in the corner and say, you only get to talk to us about these issues. We just have to remind folks, and I haven't had to do it with this oversight committee, I've had to do it with other ones, the extent of what their actual authority is. So I appreciate what councilmember Chu wants to emphasize, which is they don't have an ultimate determination of what you do on the debt issuance. But I think you would agree that through your staff, any input they have that's of value should be percolated upwards so that you have it for your consideration.
And it's not to preclude anybody from commenting or being part of the process.
That's right.
As, as, as a resident or, or a citizen, you know, but it's not the role of the committee.
And we're not getting out ahead of ourselves here.
That's right. I, I agree with all of those statements. You know, what, what I think everyone will have to keep in mind is, at the end of the day, we hire experts in the financing world to make sure we do this correctly and in the way that's in the best interest of the taxpayers. I have great confidence in the two gentlemen who are here, that they have Larkspur's best interests at heart and will steer us to an appropriate financing mechanism that we will be bringing to at a later date.
All right. Councilmember Harf, you have questions regarding the item?
Just, just, just one footnote and then, and then a question. The footnote is, we have an agenda item number eight tonight, which calls for the appointment of the oversight committee.
Yes.
And I just think that's important because if there's a question about people getting ahead of each other on any aspect of this, we're doing a lot tonight that's at the very preliminary stages and trying to bring together all of these efforts in a coordinated way. And I think that's a good thing.
It is. And, you know, when we scheduled all of this out, we naively thought that we had structured things in a way where you'd be able to make the appointments to the committee at the last meeting. So one of the reasons we didn't have a committee yet to tell that we were going to do this is that, uh, for very good reasons, the council elected to defer that decision till tonight. But we didn't feel we should push the entire process back.
Exactly.
To accommodate that because we didn't feel tonight's actions were of a, a nature where the consequences of, of not moving, we felt the consequences of not moving forward were greater than the consequences of not, of waiting, so.
And hopefully we'll make the appointments that are contemplated in agenda item number eight tonight. So. Then this other, the other question is back, just a, a technical question. On for agenda item 4.5, do we require, or do you require one motion or two motions?
I think now that you've pulled it, you should probably move both resolutions separately.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking and we, we'll do that. And I'm, I'm ready to make a motion unless there's...
Thank you.
We've, we've taken the item on. We've heard a staff report. We've asked questions. Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this agenda item?
Cindy Winter, I feel really stupid here. The sales tax money comes in. Does it go to the city of Larkspur or does it go to the financing authority? And who leases back from whom? That's my question.
I can answer that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll start with the sales tax money comes to the city of Larkspur. So let's just use a hypothetical, very likely scenario that one of the leased properties is city hall. And so the city's going to lease the property to the financing authority for a dollar, right? For the period of time of whatever bond issuance we've done for the payback. So now the, the financing authority now holds the lease to city hall for that period of time. And they're going to lease city hall back to the city for the cost of the annual bond payment. And so then the city, which has collected the tax money, will pay it to the financing authority, which will in turn pay the bond trustee. Now, but, or the bond issuer. But if you think about that, since it's all us, it's all happening with the same staff people and the same council. So from a practical standpoint, you know, the same finance director's doing all of this, but we'll make sure it has the right header each time so that we're making it clear where the money's going, coming from. So sales tax to the city, bond payments from the finance authority, and lease payment from the city to the financing authority to give it the money to pay the bonds.
Got it.
Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions on item, agenda item 4.5? Yes, sir.
James Holmslarfer, what, what is this? Is this, did someone forget this?
Uh, that's the slideshow.
Oh, okay.
Device. Thank you.
I, I too shared Mr. McClure's concerns about, about the calendering on the consent calendar because the consent calendar is usually for more routine things. So I appreciate it being taken off. My, my question is twofold and, and focuses on the, I'm on the, the Measure C committee also. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Measure C committee because as stated, we didn't, we haven't reviewed this. I do remember generally, as part of our wide-ranging discussions, there were issues in the Measure C committee, some concerns about what the security would be and whether or not city assets and city buildings would be pledged to secure the bonds as distinguished from the sales tax revenue. And following up on that, my question is twofold. And my first question, well, bond counsel said that the assets will be security for a leaseback, but at no time will they be at risk. And I'm a little bit unclear on that because security almost by definition means the assets are at risk. So I guess my first question would be, will the city buildings and the park be encumbered rather than just the sales tax revenue stream as security for these bonds? And, and if the answer is that the buildings will not be encumbered for the, for, for, for the bonds, then why is it necessary to entangle the buildings? Why not just have the financing authority convey the bond proceeds to the city in exchange for the city assigning the sales tax revenue stream to the authority as, as payment for the bonds that it has issued? That would seem to be a fairly straightforward exchange. So I think that's my, my initial question and I'd like to hear, hear the answer. And then I guess I, I have a follow-up question about the bondholders, the bondholders remedies in, in the event of default.
Mr. City Manager?
I think Mr. Quint would be the appropriate person to answer these questions.
Good evening. I'm Brian Quint. Quint and Tim McGon, Bond Council. So let me try to make this clear. The answer is, first of all, it would be delightful if we could have the city just assign over the sales tax revenue over to the authority to pay the bonds. Unfortunately, there's no, there's no authority in the law to do that. The sales tax is a general fund revenue source, and the city does not have the power to pledge the revenues for, to the authority or to anybody else. Just like any other general fund revenue source, whether it be the sales tax revenue, whether it was TOT revenue, you just don't have the power to pledge it directly. So in California, when a revenue is a general fund revenue, the way that we finance is to do a lease financing, whether it's a lease leaseback with the JPA, whether it's certificates of participation, which you may have heard of. In either case, it has to be structured as a lease financing because in California, cities are what we call debt limit entities. And debt limit entities are not permitted to encumber their assets, in this case, the general fund or the sales tax revenues, beyond the current fiscal year without a vote of the electorate unless it satisfies an exception to the constitutional debt limit. What I said is where you can't pledge revenues beyond the fiscal year, that's what we call the debt limitation. But there are exceptions, and the most used exception in California is the lease exception. And if the city enters into a lease where it makes lease payments on an annual basis, even though it agrees that it will be over time, 20 years, 25 years, whatever it is, it is not a violation of the Constitution if the city enters into a lease that has certain, meets certain requirements, the most important of which is the city's obligation to pay is in exchange for its beneficial use and occupancy of the leased asset. And that's how we structure this transaction. So it is anticipated that the City Hall building and the library and the fire station and Piper Park, which are your substantial assets, will be used in the financing as a lease leaseback. Are the assets encumbered? They're encumbered in the sense that we're using them, we will be using them in the financing. And again, it should also be reiterated that we're not doing anything at all about the financing tonight. This conversation we can have in a month from now or whenever we are going to bring this back to you for actual consideration of the financing. But since we're discussing it, those assets will be encumbered in the sense that they will be used in the lease leaseback transaction. The properties are not mortgaged, there's no deed of trust on the property. Where it would be, a failure to pay would allow somebody to come in and foreclose and take the property away and sell it to pay the debt. That's not what we have here. In the situation where the city would not pay, if it had beneficial use in possession of the property for the preceding year and it didn't pay, it would get sued and it would lose because it would have a legal obligation to pay under the structure of the lease financing. If the city didn't have the money to pay, what are the other remedies? There's called a reletting remedy, and that means that the trustee on behalf of the bondholders would have the ability to attempt to relet the property to somebody else. I don't know how many people would be interested in renting City Hall or a fire station. And if they could do that, they would use those revenues to offset the payments that the city didn't make. There's other limitations here because this is, these are intended to be tax exempt bonds, and so it would strictly limit who this new less C might be because if it's not a governmental entity, it would impair the tax exemption. The bottom line is that this is how we structure these financings, but this reletting remedy is illusory because it's, in my 38 years of doing this, and in California for over 35 years, it's, I've never, ever seen a situation where the asset was relet to anybody because it just is not a reasonable alternative. So I hope that that helps. There is no possibility, as Mark earlier said, that the city is going to lose title to the asset. It just isn't, doesn't work that way.
Vice Mayor Morrison has a question.
And this is a common scenario for cities to pursue.
The most common for cities where the general fund is the source of payment for the borrowing, it is primarily the only financing structure that is even usable. Like I said, lease revenue bonds, certificates of participation, that's form over substance. The bottom line is it's a city, general fund, lease financing. And that is the most, that is the only way that a city can leverage its general fund revenues to finance anything.
All right. Would you restate your second question, Mr. Holmes?
I actually think that that does essentially answer the second question. But if I understand.
Could you speak into the microphone, James, please?
If you understand, if I understand what was said, it would be legally possible that the city could lose the use and possession of the city assets even though it would not lose title, legal title, to those assets. Is that a correct understanding?
Technically, yes. That is correct. There's a remedy in the transaction for a reletting remedy if the city fails to pay. However, it is not a particularly useful or usable one, but the answer to your question is yes, but it would be a highly, highly unlikely scenario that that would occur. Particularly here where the city is intending to use the sales tax revenue, which is a component of the general fund, to pay this. And that was the whole point of going to the voters and asking them to increase the sales tax so that we'd have this money. So the scenario where the city isn't going to pay is miniscule. It wouldn't happen. Now, the only other possibility is that if the city did not have beneficial use in possession of the leased asset, again, remember that's City Hall, library, fire station, Piper Park, because something outside of its control did not allow that asset to exist anymore, and I don't want to jinx anybody, but if the building burned down, it's no longer available for the city's beneficial use and possession. So because that is a risk to the bondholder, to the investor, we deal with that. We buy, we ensure that you buy casualty insurance so that you can rebuild the building and have an asset that you will have beneficial use and possession of. And we build that into the transaction. Investors wouldn't, they understand the debt limit, and they understand how lease financing works in California, and they need to know that there's some protection in case that would happen because they know that if the city wouldn't have beneficial use and possession of the asset, the city's, under that scenario, the city is not in default. By law, what happens is, we call it, the city's obligation to pay abates. We call these abatement leases. And that means that if the building burned down and you didn't have beneficial use and possession, you wouldn't have an obligation to pay, and you wouldn't be in default because the market understands that under that scenario, you don't have to pay because you don't have it. So we build in the protection, the insurance protection. Also, the only other possibility, realistic possibility that would prevent you from having beneficial use and possession of the asset is that you don't own the building. And the true and correct owner came in and said, "City of Larkspur, get off of my land. You're on my land." We buy title insurance as part of the transaction so that if that ever happened, 100 years, I think this building's probably 100 years old, if somebody came in and legitimately claimed that you didn't have title, we got a title company that is guaranteeing that you do, and they would pay. So we make every protection to ensure that the city can pay and will pay, and by virtue of how this whole thing is being structured by virtue of the sales tax, the likelihood that you won't is remote.
Thank you for that information, and thank you for the questions.
That pretty much answers my question. I'm not sure it assuages by disquiet, but it answers the question. I guess, and I may be getting ahead of myself here because this relates to the economics, but in light of the entanglement and the exposure, is respecting the assets, is the, if there was a decrease, I mean, I understand here in the second paragraph of the, I'm sorry, the first paragraph on the second page of the staff report, it says that the cost will be approximately 1.6 million a year. If the sales, and the anticipation is that the, that the sales tax revenue will cover that and leave the city sufficient revenues for ancillary infrastructure. Has there been work into these projections, the contingency that, that sales tax might drop to the same extent that it would say it did in '08? And I'm not saying, are we going to consider the apocalyptic situation, but I mean, if, if, and we all, of course, like Mr. Trump, and assume his prosperity will continue, but assuming it didn't, and assuming there was a similar downturn, as some say there will be, are our projection, do our projections give us room to continue to service the bonds even if there has been a decrease in, in sales tax, say equivalent to, say, '08?
It's a bit premature to have this particular discussion until we have an actual proposal for you to review. What I will say is that I hope Mr. Holmes and I have enough interaction over the years that he would know I have a plan for that particular contingency. And so the answer is yes, we have accounted for years of shortfall and where we would find the money that we need. It would hurt if there's a shortfall where we can't make those payments. We'll feel some pain in the budget, but we will have a plan, we have a plan to deal with that particular contingency. You'll recall, though, 1.6 million, which was the number we put into the measure, is our conservative number of the revenue. It looks like it's probably about right as sales tax slows a little, but it's a good number.
Councilmember Chu has a question.
Yeah, isn't it also true that the debt service was set at 80% of the proceeds, anticipated proceeds each year? So you have some built-in padding.
Not sure that that's what we ultimately did. I'd want to go back and look. I think we committed in the measure to approximately 1.6 million. When the economy's been running strong, that's about 75% of, to 80% of what we were earning off of Measure C, I'm sorry, what we would project off of Measure B. When the economy's running weaker, that's probably more what the number's going to be.
Yeah, but we're not anticipating a specific amount and using the whole thing for debt service. That was never the intent.
It was not our intent. I just, you know, this, when we get to that discussion, you need to be prepared to hear if we do think in lean years, it could be that the entire revenue stream goes to the debt payment.
Yeah, right. But we could still.
But we will take precautions to have money on hand for that.
We always do.
All right. We have two resolutions we're considering on this.
I'm sorry, I did want to make one comment, because you did hear from two members of Measure C Committee. I did want to acknowledge that I learned a lesson through this process to make sure Mr. Pressman and Mr. Quint are always present when I'm talking about some of these issues because I suspect that some of my responses months back to the Measure C Committee were not as accurate as I would like them to be. And I've learned that these two gentlemen are the right people that are in the room because the Measure C Committee often has some very sharp questions. I just wanted to acknowledge I may have contributed to some confusion.
Well, I think we also want to create the right balance, that we're open and interested in what our volunteers have to say. More often than not, it's helpful. And we want to make sure that we're optimizing the relationship between everybody in that effort. Are there other members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this Agenda Item? All right, we have two resolutions before the council. I'll bring it back to the council for consideration. We need two separate actions. The first one is Resolution Number 21-18. I'll consider a motion.
I'd be happy to make that motion to adopt Resolution Number 21/18, authorizing the commencement proceedings in connection with the issuance of lease revenue bonds to financing infrastructure improvements throughout the geographic boundaries of the city, retaining a Bond Council and a Disclosure Council, and directing certain actions with respect thereto.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. The next action, Resolution 22-18. Is there a motion?
I'd be happy to move adoption of Resolution Number 22-18, of the City Council of the City of Larkspur authorizing the execution and delivery of a joint exercise of powers agreement by and between the City of Larkspur and the Parking Authority of the City of Larkspur.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries as well. Thank you for your patience. That concludes the consideration and approval of the consent calendar. Next item on the agenda is City Manager's Oral Report. And I will note, the, I'll consider that the discussion that has taken place thus far as contributive to the Agenda Item issues as they come up later with respect to those related items.
Apologize, Mr. Mayor. On the City Manager's Report. So I only have three items that I wanted to draw to your attention this evening. The first is that you opposed, you adopted or authorized a letter to oppose Senate Bill 827. You may recall this was a bill that the Senate was considering that would take away some local land use authority if certain conditions were met about building dense housing in and around transit hubs, rail stations, and bus stations and the like. That bill actually died today in committee. So I think that what we've heard through the grapevine is that the cities and the counties were heard loud and clear that this is not the way to solve this problem. I think it's a significant sign that it didn't get out of the Authors Committee. As the council knows, but the public may not know, usually if a bill has a strong advocacy group behind it and members of the legislature who do support it, typically it does make it out of the committee. So if it didn't make it out of the committee, that means those folks who are experts in that subject material were uncomfortable with the bill. So I'm sure we'll see something come forward again at another date, but this one died in committee today.
And just on that, I want to thank you for your support in getting that letter out on behalf of the city, and thank the council for supporting or taking a position, along with, I think virtually, every other community, certainly in Marin County, if not most of the rest of the state.
So that was, that was good news. We'll have good news this evening, so. The other one is, we're moving along at a nice clip on our general plan update process. In fact, I suspect you'll be hearing a little bit about that from Councilmember Harf in a little while. I just wanted to note that we are rescheduling the next public workshop, which is the circulation element discussion, which, folks who are interested in the more dynamic aspect of our general plan, I think this is a key workshop to consider attending because we're really going to lay out for folks what the circulation element deals with and what the issues are, and some of the policies, as the council knows, there, we have some key policies around measuring circulation. And of course, the state law has changed and has some new measures for circulation. So, good meeting attendance, but moved to May 15. Details to be announced, but I suspect based on room availability, I've heard it's probably going to be here in the council chamber. But look to our website for a post in the next day or two with all the information. But May 15 is the confirmed.
In the evening?
It's an evening meeting, and all the details will be up in the next day or two for folks to get. And then lastly, we did have a workshop to unveil the preliminary draft of our program to repair our roads, our Measure B-funded program. I want to thank the public work staff and our transportation and road team, our pavement team, for forming that workshop. And the plan is now online, so interested members of the community can go online, they can review the plan, they can send us their concerns, comments, questions, and we'll be happy to give them information and feedback. We're going through that period now of giving folks the opportunity to review it before we present it here to you as a council in May. So please visit our website to take a look. I'm going to turn it back to the council.
Questions to the City Manager and his. Questions to the City Manager and his oral report? All right, thank you very much. The next item is council members' oral reports and comments. Are there council members that have reports this evening, other than Councilmember Harof? Councilmember Morrison?
If you start, Kevin?
Yeah, unless somebody else wants to go.
No, go.
I'll follow up after you're finished.
Okay, that's fine. As the City Manager mentioned, the, the general plan update process has been continuing. And I want to thank, again, Neil Toth for his efforts in making that happen. It really is quite a substantial effort. We've had one workshop already on April 3rd, that was a public workshop to focus on updates to the health and safety element of the general plan update. And then we met as a steering committee last night to consider those same issues in, in greater detail, taking into account some of the feedback that we had received from the public at the, at the, at the workshop. And I want to, I want to make sure people understand, this is not just, you know, 30,000-foot level review process that we're going through in the committee. We are getting drafts of proposed revisions, actual revisions to the language of the general plan, on a chapter-by-chapter basis, and we are reviewing those page by page, and providing feedback from the committee to planning staff on things that we think are good, things that we think may need to be changed. And I think that's been a very healthy and productive process. So again, last, last night, we got together as a steering committee to review the community health and safety element, addressing a number of specific sections within that regarding community preparedness, fire hazard policies and programs. A topic that involved a fair amount of conversation was adjustments to the wildland urban interface and the designations of, of parts of our community with elevated fire risk, and to make sure that the general plan accommodates actions going forward in the future to respond to those risks. We discussed a little bit about flood control, and recognizing that the flood control process is going through with Flood Zone District 9. So it's a little hard to know exactly what to say within the framework of our general plan about that, because that is a separate process that involves multiple agencies and it's ongoing. But we will be addressing flood control in that context. We'll also be addressing the challenges presented by sea level rise, to the extent that we have a capacity to address those challenges as a community. We'll also want to recognize within our general plan the need to address the challenges of sea level rise on a regional basis, taking into account, for example, the county-driven sea level, sea level rise vulnerability assessment that is, has been conducted and is ongoing at the county level. And a couple of other kind of ancillary issues, including noise and the hazardous materials and some other things. So it's a very comprehensive, detailed review of that section. Thank you again for letting folks know about changing the date for the upcoming workshop. We will continue to have steering committee sessions based upon the feedback that we received at that workshop, so I really want to encourage members of the public to attend the workshop. This is one of the more critical opportunities for public engagement on the general plan update process. That's it.
Councilmember, our Vice Mayor Morrison?
I sit on the Community Development Block Grant, and that is HUD, that's HUD Grants for the extremely low-income individuals and housing. And I just want to talk to you about three categories that we had to deal with. Each year, it seems like the HUD grants, the, the amount gets lower and lower, which is quite sad. So the three categories, one is the housing projects, that's nonprofits coming up for, asking for new roofs, for building new housing, et cetera. So HUD gave us $462,000 to deal with that. We got 12 applications. We were able to assist seven nonprofits, which is sad, we did not give them the full amount, a very small amount. We also dealt with capital projects, that's the emergency homeless shelters, along with community rooms and centers. HUD gave us $244,000 to deal with that. We've received nine applicants, we're only able to fund four, which also, once again, we are not able to give them their full capacity of asking. Public service is another category, which is, includes the rest program, children program, senior care, legal systems, et cetera. HUD gave us $285,000, I rounded up all the, the amounts. We received 19 applications. We're only able to fund 15, and once again, only, you know, not even a third of what they're asking. I also want to announce that the rest program for the, the homeless individuals do not exist anymore and will not continue. So I hope when we have the discussion to support the MCC Community Homeless Fund, to assist with the mobile showers, I hope we all agree that that's an important avenue that we need to continue with. It's incredible, because when the showers show in certain locations, the coordinated entry, anyone that takes a shower, they have to be entered into the coordinated entry. It's incredible the amount of data we're gathering of who exists and their needs. So it's been a success story so far. And what we're also finding, that a lot of families that are living in cars are coming and using the showers. So we're surprised about the amount of families that are actually living in their cars. Just want to share it with you. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of important comments. Flood Zone 9, I sit on a budget subcommittee, and we're, we're going to have our next iteration looking at the entire project and annual spending. Those, this was mentioned in public comment earlier, the subcommittee meets November the 24th, and then following that, we'll be scheduling the next Flood Zone 9 Advisory Board meeting. This is important, as Larkspur's project area relative to the entire flood zone project has really not been shown yet, so we're waiting to see what survives the process for us. So I'll keep the council posted on that. We had a SMART board meeting today, and I'll only comment in that, in addition to the, to the updates on works, work related to the Larkspur extension, which is taking place, a fiber optic infrastructure was built the entire length of the SMART right-of-way, and today, this, the, a gigabyte service was launched to most of Sonoma County for all of the schools, merchants, which are allowed to tap into that dark fiber now. So it's a very valuable asset that has resulted from the SMART project in addition to the transportation benefits. And Wi-Fi on the train now is seamless. With respect to TAM, I met this past Monday with TAM's staff to discuss the 101.580 connector project relative to RM3, only to remind us how important it is for the city to support RM3 and the gas tax measures that are upcoming. So those are my reports this evening. Thank you very much. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which we have no public hearing this evening. We'll move to our business items, and the first item is Item 8.1, to appoint members to the Measure B Citizens Oversight Committee. May we have a staff report, please?
This is actually a follow-up to your previous meeting, which is that the council, as part of the Measure B ordinance, is required to set up an oversight committee. And at your last meeting, you were presented with the applicants and reminded that you had adopted before that, the, a resolution setting up a structure with nine members. The council felt that there should be opportunity for some of the council members to vet the candidates a bit more and make a recommendation as to who should be the slate to appoint to the position. And I believe councilmembers Chu and Harof met to do that on your behalf and probably have a report and recommendation to make to you this evening. And just want to emphasize that these are open meetings, and so individuals not selected are more than welcome to come. And in my experience, everyone in the room is, speaks at these oversight committee meetings, and quite frankly, a lot of the voting occurs by consensus more than it does by formal vote, and I wouldn't expect those practices to change too much.
All right. I recall we had a, a subcommittee-
I think that's Councilmembers Chu and Harof.
That we directed to bring back a recommended list for adoption. And that's part of the staff report. Wouldn't the subcommittee like to make comments?
Well, there was, no staff reports submitted. What we'd like to be able to do is just present out to what we had discussed. Councilmember Harof and myself met last Wednesday, and we put together criteria for selecting. A lot of it is based upon how we, as a general practice, select for our citizens advisory committees, and some of the feedback we got from the prior meeting on this topic. So in no particular order, with no specific weighting, you know, we didn't do this in a qualitative manner, just knowledge of all the issues and the history associated with both Measure C and, and Measure B. We're looking at professional experience and some financial discipline. Having participated in a leadership role or some significant contribution to a community, you know, in community service, we wanted to try and achieve balanced geographical representation throughout the communities of both the north and the south side of the creek. Looked at the general responses that were given in the applications, and tried to achieve the best gender balance that we could. In no particular, well, this is in an order, but it's not a ranking, in alphabetical order by first name, our recommendations are Bill Levinson, Bob Simon, Greg Reber, James Holmes, Jan Hobel, Joanne Sang, Mike Popovich, Steve McClure, and Tamara Hall.
Can you repeat that?
Yeah. Bill Levinson, Bob Simon, Greg Reber, James Holmes, Jan Hobel, Joanne Sang, Mike Popovich, Steve McClure, and Tamara Hall.
Great, thank you.
And I wasn't counting, as you listed, how many?
That's nine.
That's nine. All right, very good. Well, thank you for all the work related to this. Are there members of the public that would like to ask comments or make, ask questions or make comments on this agenda item? All right. Would either Councilmember Chu or Harof like to present the, your recommendation in the form of a motion? You go on.
Okay. I will, one more time, like to move that the Citizens Oversight Committee for Measure B consists of Bill Levinson, Bob Simon, Greg Reber, James Holmes, Jan Hobel, Joanne Sang, Mike Popovich, Steve McClure, and Tamara Hall.
Is appointed by the council?
Yes, is appointed by the council.
That's the point. And I'd like to second that motion as clarified.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice job.
The next business item, our City Department budgets, goals, and objectives. May we have a staff report, please?
So, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm going to give the department heads a chance to, I guess, given the table set up this year, we'll probably have a few of them come up and sit around, and we'll, as you know, our budget process is spread over a number of meetings. I'd like to launch it with this item. And for this item, it's an opportunity for you to hear from representatives from each of the departments or functions within the city. They're going to, each person's going to briefly go over some of the accomplishments of the current fiscal year, some of the challenges of the current fiscal year, and then some of the goals that they will be seeking in the next fiscal year. The council and the community will recognize this fuels the narrative that we put into the budget book for each of our departments. It's also a nice opportunity. We welcome questions and banter, so I think we all kind of sometimes really enjoy this meeting. It's gotten very serious this year, because there's an awful lot of PowerPoints. I think only Jamie and I are, are missing PowerPoints this year, so folks really want to make a good impression on you this year, I think. I'm going to let our city clerk, Jamie Carrillo, kick us off, and then I'll finish up for admin with Kathy. So Kathy, why don't you come up, and then, and then we'll turn it over to a few of the other departments.
All right. Good evening.
But wait, we need to designate who's Bob's son it this year.
No, that's not fair. Not everybody knows that joke, so.
Okay, who's the newest?
Well, Jamie's our newest.
Okay, okay. All right, now we, now we, now we have the right.
Okay. All right. So during my interview with Dan, he made a comment that he wasn't necessarily looking for a person that was going to spend their entire career at Larkspur, someone that would just fill the position. Instead, he wanted to bring someone on board that was going to do great work, no matter how long they lasted. So when I show up each morning, I think about what great change I can make that day. And I feel like I've been a bit fearless, and one reason for that is because I know that if I fail, I can just blame it all on Neil, and no one will question it. So this year's theme in the city clerk's office has been kind of out with the old and in with the new. So I guess the first new thing was me. I started last July and just hit my nine-month mark yesterday. So next, after my first month here, I was a bit flustered working with our old copy machine that would break on a daily basis, so I dumped it and replaced it with a new one that so far hasn't given us any trouble. And perfect timing, after getting a new copy machine, I decided we should just stop making copies altogether and get rid of all the paper in our office. So I had a shred day in October, during which more than 60 boxes from all the departments were shredded, and had a second shred day more recently, during which we shredded another 30 boxes. I've also encouraged most council members and staff to go paperless for the agenda packets, reducing the amount of packets that we create from 16 down to four. My favorite is the scanning project I've been coordinating with the Planning and Building Department. So all 30,000 aperture cards with our Planning and Building Department have been scanned and are being entered into Laserfish. And we recently sent out 19 boxes of paper files, 16 rolls of plan sets, and three tubs of Microfish to be scanned as well. And this is all thanks to Natalie Bommer and Nick Armour from the Planning Department, who helped prep all those files. Finally, furniture that would break when used has been replaced, new conference room chairs, new council room chairs that are on their way, a few new tables and storage pieces. I also brought in the ergonomic specialists to do workstation reviews. Most everything purchased, such as the standing desks, the new desk chairs, and even the 50 council room chairs arriving next week, were reimbursed through the Bay Cities Joint Powers Insurance Authority Risk Management Fund. So that's just about over $10,000 worth, worth of purchases that have been reimbursed. And I make note of this reimbursement, because Kathy's always lecturing me about spending money. So yes, I spend money, but I work at getting all that back. Thankfully, another thing that has disappeared this year is my fear of Kathy. She's, she scared, she scared me a bit. No, she actually scared me a lot during my first month here, so I was absolutely thrilled when she said I was like a sister last week. So yes, sisters bicker, and will have their days, but at least she's not so terrifying anymore. In the coming year, I'm excited to continue making positive changes, especially with the help of a part-time assistant. I will continue with the city's record management program, hopefully moving on to help the Department of Public Works, while also making administrative changes to municipal code, which will be presented to council at a later date. And so I appreciate the faith and tolerance that everyone has had with me as I try to make a difference in Larkspur. I truly love it here.
Thank you very much. You've created the first addition to the lexicon this evening. F-O-K.
I just say something really quickly. I have not gone paperless, but I have to tell you, the packets, they always are before they're even needed, so nice job on that, Jamie. You keep us well informed.
The new codebook, that thick, right?
I want to add two things about the city clerk's office that, that Jamie's being, I think, too modest to tell you about. The first is that when I hired Jamie, I challenged her to get her certification quickly from the, in, is it the California Municipal? Tell me who it is, so I won't mess it up.
Municipal Clerk Certificate through the International Association of Municipal Clerks.
And so Jamie got that two weeks ago. And so Jamie got that two weeks ago, which I don't know if they keep records for how quickly you get it, but she got it in less than nine months. And I think when I had asked what was a reasonable goal of some of the city clerks, they told me two years was a reasonable goal. So congratulations, Jamie. Excellent accomplishment and really appreciated. And the other thing in terms of a project, and this will segue into my report on the admin area in general, is that Jamie's brought a unique skill set, which has a strong background in the law. And so as an effort to maintain and reduce our costs in terms of looking at our own codes, Jamie and I together are reading the entire municipal code and preparing rewrites to submit to the law firm through Sky's office for a review of our proposed revisions. In the past, we've done it the other way around where we have the attorneys do all the revisions and then we look them over. And I have a feeling it's going to be a lot less expensive the way we're doing it this year. So that's actually one of the challenges for Jamie and me for this next year. And we're finding all sorts of fascinating things when you read into the depths of our municipal code that have been forgotten, sentences that probably were written in 1950 and then nobody thought to erase them later on. Although once in a while, we send them to Sky and he does gently remind me that there might be some significance or reason why it's there, so maybe we should just leave it alone, so. With that said, I do want to provide some general comments about the admin area and then I'm going to turn over to Kathy for a more detailed discussion of what the Finance Department is doing. Just a reminder, your admin area encompasses the Finance Department, the City Clerk's Office, and my office. And my office, of course, is not only me, but Shannon O'Hare, the assistant to the city manager. And for Shannon, I would say this, we are probably a year and a half into her doing all the crazy ordinances that need to be done. So I realize this was the previous fiscal year, but we started her off with leaf blowers and film. And now in this fiscal year, you recently started looking at a massage ordinance and we're looking at a whole host of other things that need to be on the books but kind of get forgotten and overlooked until it's a problem. And so we're continuing that process of sort of poking around and trying to draft some of these ordinances in-house and then have Sky look them over. So I appreciate Shannon's work there. We continue to refine and improve our communication program, including a relaunch of our hard copy newsletter, which, for the benefit of the council, and so I can vent for a moment, is at the post office and apparently has been at the post office somewhere in their system for at least a month and is not in people's mailboxes. So we're working to figure out what happened there. Some of the council members know that this happened with Measure B. And there's no truth to the rumor that because the post office in Corder Madera that delivers it, they're picking on us. But we're going to figure out what's going on. But we've had, we've had some bulk mailing challenges that we just can't understand. Additionally, I think the big accomplishment for the entire administrative staff was to provide the council with what it needed to, to take Measure B to the ballot and then to see its successful approval. And then working in conjunction with Public Works now to plan the use of Measure B has been a major occupation of the admin area. I know Kathy, in her presentation, will talk about audits, but I just want to tell you, this has just been the craziest fiscal year of random auditing. And if she doesn't highlight that, I'll bring it up again because it seems like every entity under the sun has called her at some point this year and made her pull out some bit of information. Of course, admin, I'm very proud of the fact that Kathy and I have spent the last few years prepping so that when we build this bridge, we do not have to feel the level of stress that a lot of communities do when they take on this large scale of a project relative to their own general fund. We feel comfortable that we have cash now to manage this project. I'm sure that it'll still give me heartburn as we go through it, but I'm feeling much more confident that the hard work we've been doing the last year to prepare will pay off. And then I wanted to follow in some comments earlier from Council Vice Mayor Morrison. The manager selected me to be one of their representatives on issues in Marin around homelessness. So that's been a new activity for me and it's occupied a lot of my time in the last fiscal year on a regional basis. It's been very enlightening for me and I'll continue to work on that in the, in the coming year. As was alluded to, there's a lot of programs coming up to talk about. And what's an appropriate level of contribution and responsibility for Larkspur is a tough conversation because we're part of the broader Marin community and the specific problems are a little more concentrated elsewhere in Marin. But I'm enjoying that work and appreciate that I'm able to still serve you in all our local needs, but also represent you and the managers in some Marin issues. We have one major failure, I would call it, although I'm going to put failure in quotes for the administration, that's that we were supposed to get rid of the damn fire department and we haven't been able to do that. And I still have to look at Scott all the time. I was supposed to send him off to an office somewhere else. But I blame that entirely on PERS and this isn't the evening for me to rant about PERS, so I won't do that. But actually, there is now legislation we're tracking, I'll be talking to you, that I think Larkspur is partially responsible for seeing come up. And it's not good legislation and it's to, to stop good government. And I'll leave it at that and save my rant for another day. But I, I did plan on having them gone by now, but it just keeps coming back. Another, another big challenge for the coming year is we, we have been very serious for the last few years on coping with our pension, our growing liability in pension and our retiring medical programs. Those are really coming to a head, both for Larkspur and for all the cities across the state. And so I think in the coming fiscal year, our dialogue will be different. We've been working on it in earnest, but I think we need to take that up a notch this year and really start to map out a new plan. Kathy and I are working hard to, to interpret models we're being provided by the state that'll allow us to really map out some of these obligations on a longer-term basis. That's a lot of staff time, but it's going to pay off for us to do that. So I'll be emphasizing that a lot in the coming year. And lastly, I did let the 2050 process slide. We'll be bringing that back here in earnest this month and in May so that you have some of that, if not all of that information as part of your budget discussion in June. So I'll turn it back to you for any questions for me, or we can allow Kathy to do her PowerPoint. And kudos to Jamie for fully embracing the spirit of this evening.
That's right. But I suggest instead of fear of Kathy, you start saying friends of Kathy.
Well, I have to say, we launched, and this is the first of a many budget sessions to come, and so during the budget time, I'm reviewing all accounts. And our office budget was just blown up and whose name kept coming up was Jamie's. And I kept saying, what were you buying now? So as we went through, but, but to her kudos, she did get most of it reimbursed through Bay Cities. So we, we went over the office account and we had a little ruffles and we are now thick as thieves. So with that said, we're, we're into our budget and I, I like pictures and I like to show with pictures, so that's why I have a PowerPoint this evening. I'm bringing back our meet the finance department picture because we have some new faces. So if anybody hasn't met us all, there's Maria and myself and Jennifer. Maria is our payroll person. I'm the catch-all with everything and Jennifer is our AP in Twin Cities and my main backup for other, catch-up of everything else that falls on our desk. It's amazing, the oddball things that come across, like the 2006 bearer bonds that somebody's trying to find how to cash. I mean, it just is endless of surprises. This is, that last year was accomplishments was the year of audits. These are most of the audits that we went through. The first two are our annuals, our interim that usually come in May, and our annual audit that comes in in August and September. I also had the state controller come do a gas tax audit. And at the same time, PERS said, no, no, I have to come and do an IDR audit, which is the Industrial Disability Retirement Audit. And I told PERS, no, I've already, I don't have anywhere to put you. I already have an audit coming, you know, they're already here. And he said, nope, we have to come. He ended up sitting across from me on my desk for three days. They just will not, PERS has said, no, they're coming. So there is no, there's no fighting PERS. Then we also had unused sick leave and then we also, from PERS, any unused sick leave, they did a random sampling. And then we also had an information system audit that was also part of our May's audit. And lastly was the big one. We started a PERS CMA audit in March of 15 and we just now was able to complete all of the corrections needed, where I say we, I really mean Maria. Maria worked really hard on this one, to complete all the corrections. Because when they started, we were doing two fiscal years and then they kept opening and opening and opening the years up. So, and it had to be done by person, by pay period. So there's 26 pay periods in a year. There was a lot, you know, so depending on, we were looking at special compensations and recategorizing them how PERS wanted them. So that's why we were in audit forever. And once they leave our office, doesn't mean that the audit's over. It means that there's lots of follow-up afterwards. So yeah, lots of audits last year. So that was a big accomplishment and took a lot out of our time. So part was on my list to get Public Works and Engineering Department up on ESS. That didn't happen fully. We're in the process still. We did get the library on board recently. They're up and running, that's fine. We are still working on our cross-training. I have trained Maria to do the retiree medical reimbursements with Mid-America and we're all doing bits and pieces of the bank rec. So when the auditors talk about me having super rights and too much power, I'm trying to make sure that everybody in the office knows how to do different pieces of jobs. So no matter what happens, you know, somebody can cut an AP check, somebody can run a payroll, or somebody can go in and make sure that important pieces will always happen no matter what. So we're working on that one. Jennifer finished the billing of the Twin Cities Childcare Center. That's been a huge piece for her. And then, and a lot has changed. Like when I started, I know that she's made major improvements where most of it's now being done electronically. So we're sending out emails for invoices and most parents don't want paper. Most parents want to be able to sign up electronically and that's all happening now too. But the most important, and I can't believe it's taken this long, we now have a state-of-the-art credit card machine. So I know it has taken way too long to get this going, but here it is. First, we have a machine, then we had to wait for Tyler to catch up with the chip technology, but it is up on the counter. We've tested it downstairs. They've tested it last week. I think it'll be ready for them to use next week and going forward. So I know, that's more of an embarrassment than it is an accomplishment at this point in time. Goals for next year is the continuation of cross-training, you know, more of what do I do at year end and reconciling accounts, training for fixed assets and the year-end reporting. We have partial manuals for payroll accounts payable and cash sharing, but we don't have them all put together. And then last but not least, I'm sure Julian would be happy to get ESS, electronic timed cards. There are guys up and running on that. Other than that, there's what we're doing in finance for the most part. Oh, and we're there to help.
So any questions for admin?
Just what an amazing patience you have.
So, well, there is transparency for you.
Okay. Why don't we do our community services department? So we'll do recreation and library next. And this will be interesting because Dick Whitley, our director, is not in town. We have Nick Stone here. Nick and Dick both know that, in my opinion, the best employee in the recreation department is always the recreation supervisor, but since Nick is here as the acting director, I don't know if he's still my favorite employee or not. I'm confused.
Well, I don't know. Kathy's presentation was pretty entertaining.
Great year in the rec department. We did a lot of fun things. One of my favorite events that we do is the annual flashlight egg hunt. It's on a Friday night, March 30th, this last year, or just a few weeks ago. And we had over 200 kids come out to Piper Park at 8:30 at night with their, their flashlights and headlamps and stormed the park looking for the 2,000 eggs that we had out there. And it is quite a rush being out there when they, when they break ranks and just come for you. So it was, it was fun and no joke, it was over in about four minutes. So I got to get more eggs next year. Very next morning, we had the spring egg hunt, which is one we switch off with Corder Madera every other year. So this year, we did it at Piper Park. Next year, it'll be at Town Park. And we had about 400 to 500 people. It's hard to, hard to really count out there, mostly young families. We had a petting zoo and a visit with the bunny out there for, for photo ops. And the bunny is actually our, our summer school director, Erin Duggan. And she's assisted by Beth, who is the co-director out there. And kids love the bunny and, and she does such a great job because some kids come up and they're, they're scared and, and she does a great job of coaxing them over for pictures.
I guess Nick doesn't think any of the kids are watching our streaming video right now.
So, so it was great. We had about 6,000 eggs out there for, for the kids on Saturday. And that one lasts a little bit longer, mostly little kids and stuff. So we continue to work closely with the staff at Corder Madera Parks and Rec. We publish a couple of joint brochures with them each year and that saves us on printing costs and distribution. It also allows us to cross-market among all the cities and towns. We're currently looking at doing one for the summer with them, but between all of our summer offerings, it's going to be about the size of a phone book. So, so we're trying to figure out how that's going to work. This summer, we're, we're doing a joint effort, Movies and Music in the Park, which is going to be really exciting. Every month, we're going to switch off doing, doing a music, music concert or movie at Piper or Town Park. On June 30th at Piper Park, we're going to have Zydeco Flames. I don't know if any of you guys are familiar with them, but they're a local band, been around for about 30 years, Zydeco Music. And going to be a, a fun time. I was able to, to get them at a pretty reasonable cost and we're looking at cost recovery models right now and seeing how we can break even on it. September 7th, we are showing ET. I decided to go a little bit old-school with the movies that we're showing, hoping to draw, draw some large crowds out for that. So that'll be at Piper Park on September 7th. Hope to see you guys there. Super cool summer school. We're starting registration now. Last year was extremely popular. We had over 1,000 kids take 50-plus classes that are offered at Hall Middle School for four weeks during the summer. Our directors, Erin Duggan and Beth Seast do an amazing job. Some pictures. It's not a typical summer school, you know, not the science, math and, and stuff. This is a little bit of that, but, but also a magic class. This is the science of candy. So we've managed to, to mix science with candy, obviously our most popular class right now. One of our art teachers does a great calligraphy class. This is a cool class. It's, it's girls using tools, so it's called Empower. And it's a girls-only class that they work with a woodshop teacher that they make just a ton of different stuff and using, using mostly hand tools, no, no power tools outside of drills. And Makers is really popular right now, so kids do that. They make stuff. Toni DeFrances has been with us for 15 years at the rec department and she is, she's retiring soon. We're greatly, we're going to miss her. She retires on May 31st. I think a lot of you guys have seen her. I think a lot of you guys have seen her around. She plays tennis at Piper on, on Saturday mornings. Everybody seems to know her. She's a huge Dodgers fan, so I know she's gonna watch this on YouTube. And I will say, go Giants. That'll be my last dig at her. We have a great working relationship with the administration at the Larkspur Corder Madera School District. They're instrumental in making sure that summer school happens for us, as well as various other programs. Last year, golf, last year, this last summer, we replaced the synthetic field at Hall, which is, we jointly use with them. And it is packed. Evenings and weekends just booked solidly. And right now, it's the, one of the nicest fields in Marin, so people are really happy with it. And this summer, we're looking at redoing the gym floor, which hasn't been done in 16 years. We were also invited to the Cove Tinker Day out at the Cove Elementary in Corder Madera. Dick and I went out and built sand castles with about 100 kids that cycled through and just kind of plugging summer programs and stuff that we do. Twin Cities Children's Center remains a popular part of after-school lives for children at Neil Coven's and the Cove. And Sandy Petro and her veteran staff continue to provide excellent and fun licensed daycare activity for the children of Twin Cities. The Larkspur Community Garden has rolled into another all-organic growing season with volunteer coordinator Stephen Connor at the helm. Stephen is a wonderful volunteer, looking out for the best interests of the garden and its users. The Larkspur walkers have stepped into their 30th year of cruising the streets and sidewalks around town and beyond. And thank you guys for honoring them with the proclamation in January. I know that was, that was very popular with them. The recreation department continues to enjoy an excellent working relationship with the Department of Public Works and Engineering. The guys, Gerardo, Eric, Tony and Noel, continue to maintain our parks and buildings and continue to respond to special requests, often at the last minute. We've had the pleasure and privilege of working directly with members of the Public Works and Engineering Department, specifically Julian Skinner, Bob Quinn and Rita Schock on a number of projects and requests. Rita has taken point in our efforts to establish our tree and bench donation programs and has been instrument, instrumental in the efforts to update our park entrance signs. Goals for this year, we're continuing, we're looking forward to continue to work with the DPW and Engineering in the upcoming year. Projects include the Piper Park tennis court resurfacing, potential Niven Park playground upgrades, park sign uniformity and Piper Park sand volleyball court improvements. We're also looking forward to working with library staff and presenting programs for library and recreation users. The library and recreation departments are each extremely innovative in their offerings and there are opportunities for joint programming. Additionally, we're looking forward to working with staff, council, library boards and Parks and Rec Commission on furthering the Larkspur Library and Community Center. One of the things we're looking to do is figure out how to get more people using our rec room at the, at the rec office during the weekends. We have a ton of people during the weekdays, so much so that we have to turn a lot of people away. Weekend's not quite as popular. And finally, our challenges. One of the main challenges is working with limited program space in relation to the population. We have a very active population that always seems to want more stuff. And so finding what we're gonna do is, has been a challenge. A fun challenge is, is finding what's next and what's new that people want that they don't necessarily know that they want. And that's, that's part of what we do in recreation, is just trying to stay ahead of the game and figuring out what they, what they want. And I think we're on the right track with, with more events and stuff in the park. I think the, the music and movies is gonna be a hit this summer, so I'm, I'm really looking forward to it. And that is it.
Thank you very much, Nick. Questions?
I do, a quick one.
Hi, Mayor Morrison.
Thank you. Nick, thank you. You're doing, guys are doing a great job. You met the Easter egg hunt at night. My friend lives across, took a photo. It was like the stars fell off the sky. I mean, it's amazing the amount of flashlights in the dark. There was just flashing towards their house. He said it was just fabulous to watch. And he said it did end too quickly, but the laughter was just contagious.
I'd love to get that picture if I could.
I, I will get that for you. The Corder Madera has a new senior center being built, is built. Are we gonna participate with more senior programs? Can that be one of your challenges and?
Absolutely. I would think that that could be one of our challenges. I haven't, we haven't talked too much about senior programming in conjunction with, with Corder Madera, but certainly something that could be, could be worked on, yeah.
Great, great. And then one more thing, tennis courts. Resurfacing, does that mean it won't be, it will be even? The courts will be?
That's probably a, yeah.
Well, my friends will ask me and I will have to answer correctly.
It'll be better.
Well, it's pretty uneven right now.
And if I get this wrong, I know Mr. Skinner will just jump up and explain to me. It will be smoother and it will be more even in the sense that some of the unevenness is from the need to just resurface the tennis court. But I believe many of your fellow tennis players don't like an aspect of our courts where they kind of slope a little bit.
They do.
And that's not part of this project. That's a much more substantial project and cost.
Those would be new courts, probably.
Pretty much.
Eventually.
I get that one right, Julian? All right, I got, I got a thumbs up.
Well, I'm happy to resurface, but they will, they will be disappointed. Thank you, Nick.
And that, yeah, I just wanna say, if folks don't know, that's two and a half positions doing all that work with, with an army of volunteers and hourly employees, but it's an incredible amount of production for such a small staff. So I think we'll continue with community services and have Janice come up from the library. Oh, you need to bring the mic closer.
For their support and the opportunity to talk to you tonight. To talk to you tonight and present this annual snapshot of the library. Overall, the library is doing really well, particularly given the small space that we occupy, the relatively small number of staff we have to cover operations, particularly in the face of increasing public demands for more services. Funding for the library is reasonable, although, like Oliver, we would never say no to more. And there will be minimal change to our budget this upcoming year. But we understand the city's priorities and the constraints on the budget and we're very grateful for what we have. My thanks to you, the council, for this and also to Dan and Kathy for ensuring that we stay afloat. We really appreciate it. And my personal thanks to Dan for his support and tolerance when I come in with some rather unusual requests and stories of our patrons. I promise you too, that one day, Dan, we will be able to demonstrate that we are the best modern library in the county. Thanks too, to the city departments such as Public Works and Police who have provided us with assistance and support. The team spirit is much appreciated. What I've given to you is a snapshot of activities and events that happened in 2017 in the library. We have recorded increased in most categories and have been the only library in the local MarinNet consortium to do so. For such a small library, to circulate close to 350,000 items, which covers all formats in one year, is really quite remarkable. We've increased registration, adding over 200 children to our registered number in this last year. We would like to do more, ensure that every child or school student has a card. That's a big undertaking, but we hope to do so this next year. The library loaned out over 22,700 items from our collection last year and borrowed close to, incoming to 17,000. Like most public libraries, we're finding a decrease in the number of hard copy materials borrowed out. We went down about 3%. But while, at the same time, our eBooks and other digital resources went up 7%, that's pretty consistent with what everybody else reports. MarinNet, the consortium we belong to, report that within a couple of years, they expect the digital resources to rise to about 20, another 20%. So there's no doubt that we will have to continue to work on our technological schools and services, as this is where it's obvious, you know, we need to expand our focus in the years ahead. In light of the decrease in hard copy demands, plus the fact that the library collection has not been weeded for almost 10 years, we recently undertook a massive collection review. This was completed about three weeks ago. We weeded out over 8,000 items, which was about 10% of the collection, and sent these to a bookseller, used bookseller in Nevada who shares the profits of the sales with us. All the weeded items were either damaged or had not been checked out. We get some patrons saying, you know, what was the criteria for, for the, doing this? We were very careful about what was called and we had several outside librarians and subject experts who reviewed our lists before we made any final selections of what was to go. The remaining books, we reorganized and we had Public Works, thanks to you, come and remove the empty shelves. And with the help of the Zimmer Trust Fund interest and a small grant from the Larkspur Community Foundation, we've been able to purchase and install study tables and chairs in the mezzanine area downstairs. This has been a huge success. I can't believe it. Within hours of putting in the tables and chairs up there, they were full. And every day, it is the same. We have kids coming in after school just to, to meet or study. Some meet with their tutors. Others use this area now as a quiet space to read or study or to take advantage of our scenic broadband. It really is a terrific addition. We have some interest from local artists to provide us with some pictures and photos to put on the part of the wall downstairs, including David Johnson, our resident 91-year-old photographer, who was the first African-American student with Ansel Adams. So all in all, that area is looking really good. With the Zimmer interest, we were also able to replace and add more chairs in the main reading area. The library is much better configured now. Our patrons are making good use of the space and expressing their appreciation. So that has been a really good achievement. Our programs remain a major and growing focus of the library's services. We welcome the city manager's proposal to match the FFO, Friends of the Library funds, up to 10,000 a year for programming, beginning this next fiscal year, which will make $20,000 available to us for programming. And that is greatly appreciated. The Friends, I believe, are seeking additional funds to extend programming even further. During the last six months, we recorded 29% growth in program attendance and I'm sure it will grow further exponentially. We've added several new series of programs, including a space science program, which started as a single session during the summer last year with the live streaming of the, of the August eclipse. And now it has developed into a space and science series. And we have an upcoming event on citizen space travel and another on rocket stomping, whatever that is. Our local NASA ambassador will present these talks and we're going to begin a family space and science event on a monthly basis beginning in June. And I'm really pleased that that's happening. We also converted last summer's program reading to a dog, to a year-round activity, bi-weekly. The kids love our patient and beautiful Ben, who I assure you listens very well. By popular demand, we've expended, extended our TED Talks from just being at the Tamil Pies Retirement Center and only for TAM residents, to presentations, which will begin here next month. The first one we will show is in two parts. First focusing on the way trees talk to each other, the second on the life cycle of northern redwoods. We did that up at the TAM, they loved it. So that'll be the first one here. Going forward, the Friends have paid for a movie license and June will start family film nights, where children can come with their parents, come in their pajamas and we'll show kid-friendly movies. And we'll begin Saturday afternoon movies for seniors, which the series will, will call Silver Screenings. Many of our patrons have said they don't want to come out at night or they, they live on their own, they don't want to go to a movie theater. So they've expressed the need and we'll start showing those. The Marin Villages will present the first of a number of programs on May the 12th, where we are going to explore ways so we can partner together. A health and wellness series begins on May 14 with the Health Insurance Counseling Advocacy Group presenting a program on Medicare fundamentals. And that's the first of a series with them. On May 1st, we're going to participate in the Quentfield-Greenbry Historical Society's Community History and Heritage Day at the Bonneys Center. So we're looking to promote the library there. On May 28th, the FFO, the Friends are sponsoring an open house in the library from 2:00 to 5:00. And I will talk on the future of public libraries, like refreshments will be served. You are all welcome to come. And finally, we're beginning work with Jim Rosenfeld of the Marin Country Mart to hold events and programs at the Mart and to take up his offer to use part of the Diesel Bookstore as a second, as a second-hand bookstore for the Friends of the Library. It's very generous of him to, to make that space available and for free. There are many more programs and activities in the works, which we'll begin to implement in the months ahead, as we move towards a change in the focus of the library from a collection of materials, a physical core collection, to a learning center driven by and focused on the community, as I tell Dan often, we are no longer your grandmother's library. We're looking forward to identifying ways we can become key partners in sustaining the educational, economic and civic health of the community and playing our part in creating a vibrant, vibrant civic identity. I believe this past year has seen the start of the turning of the ship in the direction of a 21st century identity. We are making connections, developing flexible spaces, promoting the value of the library as a learning center without walls and with 24/7 access. This next year, we hope to continue to build in this direction. Thank you. Got any questions?
Thank you. Are there questions of Janice from the council?
No.
Are there questions of Janice from the public?
Actually, it's interesting listening to Nick. It makes me realize that there is a lot more that we can work on and cooperate with, with them, you know, so that's added to our list of to-do's.
It sounded seamless.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you for all your work. Very much appreciate it.
Your new children's room is, is wonderful. Did a really great job.
Thank you.
All right, well, let's keep it going. We'll do public safety next. I don't know which of the two chiefs wants to go first, but, all right, we're gonna have police first.
I thought I'd go last. Usually the headliner goes last, but.
You said it. Lot of pressure now.
So last year, if you remember, I forgot. And I came up here and just danced around for a couple of minutes and tried to go off memory. And I promised you at least a PowerPoint this year. So I did grab a few photos off our Twitter feed, but I wasn't sure, maybe Sky can chime in. I wasn't sure if I could show like people's faces that weren't our employees, but then I came up with a solution. So going with our 2017 accomplishments, the first thing I wanted to touch on was community outreach. And that's a picture of me actually as Batman at the San Anselmo Goblins Parade, handing out candy to a little, little boy. And so he does look a little bit like our fire chief. But we did do a lot in 2017 and we're gonna, all of these accomplishments, we want to continue into the future. But Coffee with a Cop next Thursday is in Larkspur, Pete's Bon Air. We love it when council members stop by, at least so someone comes and talks to me. I think it's, I'll get back to you, but I think it's at 5:00. It might be 4:00 though, so, sorry. We did our, we just finished up our second annual citizens academy and we did National Night Out again. And one of the cool new things we started is about every two months, we play a sport with the, I think they're called, Nick on the Larkspur Seals?
Seals, yeah.
Okay. And they're a group of special needs adults that play either basketball or wiffle ball in the hall gym. And it's a great opportunity for all of our employees to get out there and interact with the community. And it's really fun for them, it's fun for us, and we all have a great time. So that was one- So that was one of our big goals that I think we reached, was just improving our community presence and outreach last year. Next, a big one is succession planning. So there's a theme here, if you haven't figured it out yet. We've hired a lot of new young people, and over the last two years, we've actually had about eleven new officers. And when you have forty-two officers, that's a lot. That's about twenty-five percent of our staff. So we've had eleven people over the last two years, and I think it was seven last year, go through field training, which is a very extensive thing, and it's all gone really well, and we've had a lot of promotions. So there's been a lot of training going on and just preparing people to be competent officers, but also getting ready for that next step in their careers. Another big one we wanted to do was expand our volunteer program. So that one gets me every time. Sorry, John. We had two volunteers for years, and we couldn't really figure out how to get more, other than just kind of blasting out social media, but we, through our Citizens Academy, realized that was going to be a great pipeline, and we actually managed to get in three more full-time volunteers to a total of five, and we've already made the pitch to this last class, and we think we might get one or two out of this as well. As volunteering grows within our department, the great thing is its cost savings. We don't have to pay someone, like a cadet, to go do a lot of these tasks or a lot of the filing. We have someone who's great workers and love being there, and we love having them. Then, yes. What, what are you looking? No, that's just a really small person who came to the station. He was actually a really cool kid. I got to meet him. He loves police, and he had patches from all sorts of different police agencies sewn onto his jacket here. And, yeah, and he was saluting, but, yeah. One of my many talents, my creative side, you get to see here tonight. And finally, one of our big accomplishments was improving equipment. This is actually a cute story here, where we got dispatched to a call in Corder Madera of a teenager on a scooter driving recklessly through town, and that's Officer Peterson. He's still on FTO, he's our youngest officer, and I guess they pulled into the cul-de-sac, and it wasn't a teenager on a scooter driving recklessly, it was a five-year-old in a toy Jeep driving in her cul-de-sac. So his training officer said, well, pull it over. And he's like, really? And we're like, yeah, pull it over. So, you know, he was messing with them, and so we turned the lights on. And of course, your worst scenario is it comes to a stop and the little girl's younger sister jumps out and runs into a yard. So now we're like, oh, great, what did we just do? So one had to go chase down one kid and dealt with that. Luckily, the parents came out and thought it was great and said, take a picture, this is a great, great picture for us. So improve equipment, we did have a very aging patrol fleet. As you've noticed, we've gone from the chargers to the SUVs, and you see more and more. Those are great because they're easier. Our officers spend ten or eleven hours a day sitting in a car, if you think about it. They're much better for their backs, there's a little more space for them, and actually, believe it or not, they're actually more fuel efficient than those chargers, even though they're a much bigger car, just the way they're kind of an eco-friendly transmission, I guess. And then we also have started, if you've seen my new car, we got a couple new, our unmarked cars were getting really old. They actually, I was driving a car that I actually drove as a detective. I think it was, it's been about twelve years ago, the same car. So we finally started parting some of those out, and we've been getting hybrids, which are great. We get about forty miles to the gallon in those. And we're also working on, through some asset forfeiture money, getting some new body cameras soon. Our body cameras are already kind of end of life, and there's a much better one, and we're proving how useful those are. And we're also looking at, we've gotten some new tasers and rifles over the last year that were about fifteen years old as well, not the tasers, but the rifles. So goals, the first one is recruitment and retention. We've had a lot of turnover. So some of you may have seen our flyer, we're kind of doing a rebranding. We used to just have a picture of our building, and we'd throw the salary and some stats and go, hey, come, come apply, and we get all these applications. And we're realizing that's just not working, we're not getting people applying anymore. We've had a lot of turnover, and most people have said it's just due to the cost of living and the commute, and they want to work closer to home, and they can get comparable salaries up there. So we're really focusing on trying to get people with, that either grew up in Marin or that live in Marin, and we feel if they have a tie to the community more, they're more likely to stay beyond, you know, five or ten years, and that's really our goal. And we're also doing a big new push to bring back the Explorer program, which in the past was a great pipeline to get people. That's how we got, like, Kevin Sennett to be an officer with us. He started as an explorer with us, just that, that pipeline there, as well as the cadets we're hiring to be our new parking enforcement. They all want to be police officers at some point, not just do, you know, tasks while they're in college and then graduate. So trying to build that pipeline up and also hit our local colleges like Dominican and go to their job fairs. So it's a few years out, but I think it's a good, it's a good strategy, and I think it's going to pay off in a couple of years to really improve that. Another thing is we're going to establish a mentorship program, and by that I mean to just improve our retention and morale of our younger employees. We're going to assign them senior officers, and that's kind of who they check in with, because a lot of times they don't want to talk to their supervisor. And we're hoping that'll kind of keep morale up and keep them around a little bit longer for years to go. And we've noticed with this turnover that the new blood that's coming in is super eager and super proactive, and it's brought a lot of life to our agency, and we just want to keep that going. And we're also going to be working on training. A lot of, with our new officers, they haven't gone through a lot of the de-escalation or CIT tactics, Crisis Intervention Team that we train in-house, but you don't necessarily get in the academy, even though it seems to be what everyone's going towards. So we're getting them all trained up over the next year, and with a lot of new supervisors, we're going to not only send them how to be a supervisor, but how to be a leader, get them through a lot of leadership training. And finally, this one's not so funny to end on, but I had to put his picture in there somewhere. We want to establish a homeless assistance team, and so this is kind of real early stages. That's actually a photo from near Red Hill in San Onoflo, and that was a homeless camp where someone had been cooking the night before, and it started a grass fire, and it required a helicopter to come in. And I think we had another fire there where we actually had a massive jet come in and drop red fuel. So as you all, we kind of, this has been a common theme, but what we want to do is partner with some of the city and town employees, like the fire department, the Public Works, reach out to the county, Health and Human Services, and also, like, Ritter and some of those services, and see if everyone will just give one body to, like, kind of form a, where we meet once a month, talk about how we can improve things. And from our end, we, we take a lot of these groups out and these people to go hit the camps around, because in the, the way it works now is we basically just get dispatched there and we, we kick people out, and then they come back or they go one hill over. It's just, we're kind of just kicking the can around. And I think, I've noticed when I was an officer, with mental health, we really got into mental health treatment, and everyone got trained on it, and everyone had the resources, and it works great, because we don't have people with severe mental health that we're, like, putting on holds all the time. We find places, we place them, we work with even the district attorney and the public defender to get everyone on the same team with these, and I think there's an opportunity to do something like that with homeless, so that's what we're going to explore. It's not going to solve the problem, but I'm hoping it'll improve it a little bit. And that's all I have.
Questions of Chief Norton?
Vice Mayor Morris. Actually, a comment. So I sit with Supervisor Damon Connolly on the Homeless Steering Policy Committee in the Ritter House. Everyone, all the agencies that contribute to the homeless concern sits on that committee.
And do they have, like, local law enforcement?
Oh, they do, daily.
Okay.
Why don't you come and join us?
Yeah, that would be great.
Love to get you on that.
Okay, and then I'll get some good contacts.
Yeah.
Because selfishly, we kind of just look for our own jurisdiction.
I know, but it's a regional problem.
Our resources were, yeah, and that's what, if not all the depart, like, if Fairfax doesn't sit on it, or we don't sit on it, it's not, we need everyone to be a part of it, I think.
Okay, well, a lot of people do. You'll be, you'll be impressed. Great.
Thank you. You're good.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, chief shirts. This will be interesting.
I'm haunted by your presence.
Yeah, that was pretty haunting.
Oh, hey, look at that.
Well, let me start by thanking Chief Norton for that great presentation. I actually, this year, decided to kind of turn over a new leaf and be a little gentler on the police department and specifically Chief Norton, because I started to feel bad as I was thinking of all the shots I was planning to take about, you know, with police officers and especially police chiefs, they're already kind of down in the dumps because they weren't able to make it as a firefighter.
You're, you're on livestream now, chief.
And so I've gone easy on Chief Norton. So just a quick, I'm going to, most of this is pictures, and I think it kind of tells the story in the best way. We did a lot of training this last year. Part of what we did was Unified Response to Violent Incidents Training, where we partnered with the police, and we're, it's a new era in how we approach what used to be called active shooter scenarios. Now it's Unified Response to Violent Incidents, because it was discovered that our approach to any violent incident is, it doesn't necessarily have to be a shooting incident. And so the fire department used to wait with our medics outside the danger zone and eventually...
Is that someone the heroes could go in?
Yeah, so the heroes could go in and take care of the bad guys, and then they would bring victims out to the medics who would attempt to save their lives, but the, it was discovered that the delay in how long that process takes, we were losing people when something very simple that could be done where the victim is can save the life. And so now, the new approach is the firefighters are actually entering with the police officers into what was previously considered the hot zone or the danger area and wearing body armor and under the protection of, of police, as you can see in the, the green uniforms up there. We would be able to treat victims where they lie. So the feeling is that we're going to save a lot more lives with that approach, and we're trying to get trained up so that we're ready for it. We've also done a bunch of regional training recently with some multi-casualty incident scenarios and rope rescue, water rescue. We have a bit of bayfront and with our waterways, the creek, we need to be ready in case we need to get in the water. So we've done some dive training and some water rescue training. We also did quite a bit of medical training this year, and this is just a couple of shots of some pediatric medical emergency training that we did in partnership with Marin General. And I just wanted to take a minute to talk about the leadership that we have in the Central Marin Fire Department. Battalion Chief Don Stasiowski this year was awarded the Forrester Leadership Award, and that is only given to one Marin County Fire Service leader each year, and the purpose of the award is to recognize a Marin County Fire Service leader who demonstrates what Tom Forrester has always stood for, and that is providing leadership for the greater fire service community, not just within your own community, within your own town. And so Chief Stasiowski has been, for years now, leading many regional efforts in the fire service. He is still the chairman of the Central Marin Training Consortium, which is a group of local fire agencies that leverage the particular subject expertise in all of the different fire agencies so that we can incorporate the best possible training to all of our firefighters. So we're very proud of, of Don for achieving those two awards. Your fire marshal, Ruben Martin, who is one of our newest employees, was also recognized recently as being the president of the Marin County Fire Prevention Officers, another regional effort where he has led the group of fire prevention officers throughout the county this past year, and he has really, really turned out to be a fantastic hire. I know you've all had interactions with him, and I get nothing but positive feedback about what he's accomplishing and how he interacts with the public, and I could not be happier. Captain Steve Walton is wrapping up, or has wrapped up, his leadership role as the executive officer, basically the head of the Marin County Fire Investigation Team. He served in that role for many years and has just recently passed the torch. Steve's one of the most accomplished fire investigators in the county and is consistently leaned on by many other agencies to head up their fire investigations. And then just a quick, a little bit small to read, but just a quick sampling of some of the regional special operations teams that some of our members are participating in. So quite a few people in the department are, are offering their expertise to the regional teams that we participate with. And then we had a few emergency responses this year. Vehicle accidents and vehicle fires are very common for us, and I don't know if you remember, this incident was on the news. Unfortunately, I did not get the video of it, but somebody traveling by on the freeway did get a video that ended up on the news. There was a hole in the fuel tank, and the person was able to pull over, get out, and get away from the car, fortunately, before it erupted in a huge fireball. It was really quite dramatic. And then just a couple more examples of drivers behaving badly on our local roads and freeway, upside down and wrong way. And this is just a quick shot of some of our firefighters being decontaminated after responding to a hazardous materials incident. I believe this was a muriatic acid spill that they ended up cleaning up. And a few structure fires last year. The photo on the left was at the village in Corder Madera, and the one on the right was an apartment fire in Greenbree. And we had some flooding issues, some of it caused by weather and some of it not caused by weather. This is what happens when a hydrant is sheared off by a vehicle. We have excellent water pressure in some of our areas, as you can see. Thank goodness we're not in a drought. And then we responded to quite a few out-of-county wildland fires this last year. I believe the photo on the left there is in Mariposa County, and the photo on the bottom is they're setting up for some structure protection operations with the fire getting quite close to that house. And then just a couple of interesting shots from the firefighters when they were out of town on these incidents. And this is one of our newest fire engines, actually, in Tulare County this last fire season on the Pier Fire. And here is a shot from the North Bay Fires. That is the same engine that we just saw in the last slide in the Bennett Valley area at the Nuns Fire, and they were actually able to save that house. They got there in time and were able to get through that, but then later that evening, obviously, they were not able to save that house. By the time they ended up in the area of that one, it was already well underway. And we had a number of full cardiac arrest saves this last year, and this is just one example, very, very grateful Jim Moon, who gave me permission to use his name and his photograph in anything we saw fit. He was so happy with how things turned out. Very quick response and very effective use of some new technology that we've recently purchased, Video Laryngoscope, which enabled the paramedics to intubate him very quickly and effectively, and then a device called the Lucas Device, which is a mechanical CPR device, which actually takes very little time to set up and frees up the firefighter medics to do other advanced life support interventions while CPR is continuing in an incredibly effective fashion. And here we have a picture of the firefighters preparing for a technical rescue at one of the pump stations, probably wondering who they're about to rescue, and there they are, the little ducklings. So we don't, you know, we get asked about cats and trees, but it's ducklings in the pump station that sometimes we end up having to save, and the mom was extremely pleased with us that day. And then we also took some deliveries of new equipment. The, the photo on the bottom is the new Type III engine that was purchased by the town of Corder Madera, and our new Type I engine up here, purchased by the City of Larkspur. This, it's hard to see. This, it's hard to see in this slide, but this is the new kind of Central Marin branding that we're doing and we just haven't gotten it on the door yet of the new Type I, but it is coming. That's kind of the new look of the new department. And we're also involved in some community involvement and public outreach this year. We visit the schools during Fire Prevention Week and spend a lot of time talking with, demonstrating equipment for the children and reading stories to them in the library. This is actually a, not just fun, but a really useful public education event because these little kids, we found that it's really important to show them what a firefighter looks like when they're in all of their protective equipment because there's a real kinda Darth Vader scary aspect to it if you're not prepared for that. And historically, there have been stories about children that, you know, there's smoke in their house, they're scared, they're hiding and then they see this Darth Vader character coming through the house and they do not make themselves visible, they are scared and hide. And so, we try to encourage them if they see somebody that looks like this with all of this protective gear on, that is somebody that you wanna make your presence known to. And then, we also partnered with our police partners in the Halloween in Hillview event, which you're probably all familiar with. I actually have very fond memories of marching in that parade when I was about this kid's age myself, growing up in Hillview. And that's been a really fun annual tradition for the fire department to be involved in. And we also were involved with the tree lighting at Perry's with our 1926 Model T fire engine. Always fun for folks to take a close look at. And then, we bring Santa around on the fire engine to quite a few neighborhoods during the holidays and this is Santa stopping by the Creekside neighborhood. And then, again, partnering with our, our police friends with their National Night Out. Historically, a, primarily a police event, but they contacted us a few years ago to try and get us involved because kids much prefer the fire engines to the police cars. I'm just, I'm just saying.
You're not a fire marshal.
And speaking of vehicles, the police chief reached out to us a couple of months ago and asked if we'd be interested in partnering with the police department on the purchase of a new vehicle that would be important to their operation and fill a need that they felt that they had. But Kathy wouldn't give us the money, so we had to tell him sorry. Prevention and education, big part of this year and last. We held a community forum along with the police department and, and a number of other agencies in the area discussing preparedness of the community. We've also been really trying to get out the word about the current most useful alerting system available to us, which is the Alert Marin. And we have been trying to educate the public in every way we can about the importance of registering with Alert Marin so that they can get alerts in the method that they would like to receive them. There is a common misperception, although we do have the capability to do what is commonly known as reverse 911. If you have a voiceover internet or a cable style telephone, the, you will not get a reverse 911 phone call through that system unless you actively register your telephone number in the system. And then, if you do, you can also include cell phone, email, anything you'd like to be notified on for emergency notifications. And then, we participated in Assembly Member Mark Levine's Town Hall held at the College of Marin that also discussed emergency preparedness. We are preparing to send out a number of mailers. This one discussing how to be prepared and how to create defensible space and what the requirements are for vegetation fire season. And this is the backside of the mailer with very specific and graphic representations of what's required. And we're also neighboring with neighborhood response groups on preparedness. This is just one sign that was recently put up in one of the neighborhoods in Corder Madera, encouraging the local residents to have their homes inspected by the fire department and to get advice about how they can make it a little bit safer. And their goal, of course, is to have every home, in this case, 80 homes in their neighborhood, to have every home inspected by the fire department. So, Ruben's been a very busy guy. We also partnered with PG&E to Call Before You Dig program and taught many, many people Hands Only CPR at a number of sidewalk CPR events, which is a really great new program that we found really encourages bystanders to actively participate in saving a life because there are a lot of people who feel like CPR certification is complicated, there's a lot to remember, there's all of these numbers and ratios, you know, 15 compressions and two breaths and most people don't, aren't really into giving mouth to mouth, they think it's gross. So, it has really, this Hands Only CPR has been shown to be almost as effective as traditional CPR in sustaining viability in a patient suffering from cardiac arrest prior to advanced life support from the fire department. So, simply doing the compressions at the right rate until help arrives can, can save a life for sure and it makes it a lot more likely that someone's gonna get involved. And then, the Free Chipper Weekend has been a longstanding event in Corder Madera, but now, as a result of the consolidation, it's been opened up to Larkspur residents as well and we are planning to do the same thing again this year. And we're planning a big evacuation drill in Chapman Park on May 12th to test out our Alert Marin and our evacuation procedures, again, partnering with the police department. And we are going to hold other evacuation drills in other areas as we move forward. The next one will be in Larkspur. We have not chosen which neighborhood yet. And we're involved in some philanthropy and fundraising. Every year, we partner with the Lisa Ann Ruch Bern Foundation and raise money and donate money to that organization. And we're involved with the Special Olympics as well with the fundraising. And last year, just through our Fill the Boot campaigns where firefighters approach stopped vehicles at intersections with controlled signals and stick the boot out with a nice sign and a smile to donate some money for muscular dystrophy, the firefighters in Marin County last year alone raised $41,000 for that cause. And we also collected Things for Teens and Toys for Tots, or Toys for Kids, which is kind of our local version of Toys for Tots also, again, partnering with our friends in the police department and collected a number of items for the victims of the North Bay fires. So, looking forward, very briefly, I'm going long. We want to complete the consolidation. We're, as Dan mentioned earlier, it's frustrating that we've not finished that process. What we have done has, we all feel, has been hugely successful and we just wanna get across the finish line. And through no fault of our own, that has been temporarily stalled, but we are confident that we will get there. And again, that's a topic for another night, but we're gonna get there. We also want to pursue additional shared services opportunities. The one that is in my sights right now is with Kentfield Fire Department. I've been speaking with their Chief, Chief Pomey about what opportunities are available and we do feel that at a minimum, we can work together in prevention services and staffing to kind of bolster both programs by working together. Another thing that partnering with them will do is, will, it will help us with our mandatory staffing during fire season especially. When we have crews that are out of the county for weeks at a time, the number of off-duty firefighters that are able to come in when they're needed gets reduced and so, we get pretty thin and it's nice to have partnering agencies that we can draw from when we need. We also like to include some enhancements to our fire prevention program, very important topic these days, by holding additional evacuation drills and by encouraging and helping to support local neighborhoods in achieving firewise community status. That's a program that is run through the National Fire Protection Agency where a community, if they come together and, and work through certain parameters, they can get designated as a firewise community and that can not only make their neighborhood much safer, but it also can reduce, in some cases, their insurance rates. And there's work to be done with our alerting systems. There's legislation being considered now that may help quite a bit with standardizing statewide, the type and the procedures involved with alerting citizens for evacuation and other emergency notifications. Having a standard would certainly help, but we also need to consider and we're hearing from the community that they would like some redundancies in place and so, we're looking into that. We'd also like to implement the Telestaff system, which is just a semi-automated approach to our scheduling of firefighters for shifts. It, it takes an enormous amount of time with, with everything going on, trying to get all of the shifts covered when resources are out of county and doing shift trades and working in other departments. It gets complicated and we have the benefit of partnering with Santa fell on this venture because they have already purchased the system. And because we are working closely with them, we're able to kind of piggyback in to their system and just buy additional licenses. So, we're able to pursue this at a much reduced rate and it's gonna help us quite a bit with staff time. And we have a little bit of preparation to do before the MIRA Next Gen radio system rollout. We have a little bit of infrastructure to deal with and that's just something that we're preparing. And that is it. Any questions?
Sorry, I went a little long.
Just, just, just a little clarification, Chief. Running a shared department doesn't mean you get twice as much time.
I'm sorry.
Twice as much time.
I'm sorry.
But that was a very well thorough presentation.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna turn it over now.
Well, I think it's most appropriate now to bring Neil Toft up because this is the year, Neil, for you where you can be shorter than somebody else.
Oh, well, well, what I forgot, what I also forgot to tell you is the chief shirt's used up all the time for the planning department and the Public Works Department and-
Neil, if you just do a mic drop, right now, you win.
I think I can-
Thank you.
I can try to beat that.
Thank you, Scott. That was an excellent presentation.
And I do not have a PowerPoint for you tonight. So, I'm gonna keep it, keep it pretty quick.
You wanna use some of Chief Shirts' slides?
Please. Please. Just go over a few things that's gone on in the Planning and Building Department over the last year. We did have Joan Lang retire, so change in our customer service. We've got a new Permit Tech, Jim Carrigan has come on and we see a lot of value in that, both in customer service and having a lot of cross-training or kind of developing duplication in the permitting processes, both intake and coordinating with DPW, building inspection and Fire Marshal Ruben has been great to work with. And so, we're getting a lot of more involvement of Fire Marshal, both in building permits and in planning review. I've listed kind of some numbers of permits that we've gone through. I would kind of suffice it to say, we've come, we've gone up slightly over last year in the number of permits issued and what you're looking at is not just building permits, but all types of building permits and encroachment permits, grading permits as well. So, these are permits that we filter through and work through with DPW. Valuations have gone down. I think that reflects that we are getting some smaller projects in rather than large construction and, and I think we're also getting greater capture in encroachment permits as well. And some of that may be with the road projects, we're getting more lateral repair replacements in conjunction with that. So, we've really seen that begin to spike up. We're kind of looking at what's happening there. And having the second Permit Tech, we're gonna be looking at expanding the ability to do more over-the-counter permitting or having the Permit Techs do more of the encroachment permits. We're already coordinating that right now, minor encroachment permits. And that's less handoff, more efficiency to the customer and more efficiency for both our departments and Public Works. Couple of things you've probably seen, yeah, our counter areas getting a little more organized and the credit card machine, it's great to see. We're gonna donate the old machine to the Heritage Board. That's gonna get archived. Other things that are going on, records retention has really gone up. Thank you. Jamie has led, led the way and a lot of, and, and as I said, a lot, she's indicated, a lot of work from Nick and Natalie prepping files. You've probably seen some boxes out front. Those, those are transfers of files off shelves and those are gonna go away, go into the digital realm of Laserfish. And we're trying to slow down as fast as they get rid of files, of course, planning and building tend to generate paper. We're trying to slow that down a bit and become a little more paperless ourselves, working on more online forums and the ability to, in the future, potentially have online permit So, a couple of things that, a few things that we accomplished last year, I think one thing that was really good news was working with Homeward Bound. We did some preliminary work with them and helped get them through review, try to ease, ease the pain as much as possible and help them through building permit processing, planning permit processing, get some fee waivers to make that project work. We're really looking forward to them getting that going. We also promulgated some regulations for cannabis, adult use of marijuana. The state mandates have really begun to take shape and so, we've, the council's adopted interim ordinances restricting commercial uses and so on, but we have adopted ordinances for personal grow and delivery within the community and we'll have to come back and look at a more permanent ordinance in the future for commercial use. One of the main things we've accomplished in this last year is initiating the startup again of the general plan update, working with the Steering Committee. And I'll talk a little bit more about the challenges ahead for that. And I do wanna put in a plug for the Heritage Board. Their work on permit review has been a little bit light this last year, but they have been, they have gotten archive photos and archive records have gone online. So, the public is now able to go online through our website and download archive information. So, they've got that up and running. I think we've gotta get it a little more visible on the website. Other things they've been doing is actively beginning the update of the 2008 historic inventory in the neighborhood. So, the board, staff has been doing a lot of work with the consultant, but some of the board members have been out pounding the pavement and canvassing, doing sort of visual assessments of the neighborhood for the historic update. That is part of their duty under the general plan and the, and the ordinance. So, it's important for them to keep that updated. It also helps staff and property owners in knowing when we get projects in, it's, it's, if it's already been assessed, then we're kind of past that stage of any arguments about whether or not something is a historic, potentially historic resource under SEQA or not. So, this helps inform that process as well. So, upcoming goals for the year in the Building Department, we have to begin preparing for and conducting some community outreach- and conducting some community outreach regarding the 2019 amendments to the building code, particularly green building. From the sounds of it, it's going to, green building's going to become even more aggressive in going towards net zero energy design in homes and significant remodels. And so that's, it's a big step and I think we've got to begin to kind of both through our processes and do some community outreach to get people familiar with what's going on. It's an aggressive step to reduce GHG emissions and it will help inform our climate action planning as well. Other things are, we need to adopt a electric vehicle charging station, streamlining standards. There's a state mandate for this and we have to look at guidelines to see how we make that work with our local control. This is kind of an obtuse regulation, but we want to protect the character of Larkspur. So we're looking at how we can do that through this process. Other things are looking at new permit software and over the counter, as I mentioned, over the counter processing of encroachment permits. In 2008, we do see the Heritage Board working on completing the historic resources inventory. Looking at the budget, they may come back to you at some time in midterm, potentially looking for some support for consulting services to help finish that inventory. They note that there's monies in the book fund, so they may approach the council about that request once we get a really good idea of what the costs are. Other things in terms of planning, again, completion of the general plan. We look to have the draft ready by the end of the year or early next year for preparation of the EIR and public hearings. We are using a consultant right now to help us draft the general plan who will also, can also work in the capacity of preparing the EIR, so we see some efficiencies in that. But we probably, there'll be some challenges in terms of how we can meet that. And I think part of that will depend on how efficiently we get the draft done. And so far, it's been a very smooth process. I think we're coming very far along quickly using the steering committee as it was stated. I think it's been great to work with them directly and really go through line by line and knocking out a lot of things. Couple other quick things is, as Kathy talks about auditing housing and planning, we're just constantly having to reassess our housing and do reporting for HCD, county. There's just sort of multitudes of having to figure out where we are in the housing and where we're going. So that's a constant challenge and Kathy won't be conducting those, but I mean, it's, the reporting on housing is really increasing and the demands on that from, through the state. So that's another advantage of having a bit more help in the, in the permit tech position because a lot of that has to do with permits issued, where they're at and what's been completed. Because a lot of this housing reporting is going to be very much blow-by-blow at certain times. Other things, we're looking at finishing the 2015 GHG emissions and getting the climate action plan updated. That's actually being done through MCEP on a camarada with the Planning Department has been lead on that and there's, that's actually going to be coming to you within the next couple of months. That's basically a model development developed through MCEP where Larkspur is able to plug in local information. And I think a couple other, just a couple other challenges, I think code enforcement is something, we'll be, continue to work with Sky's Office. Look at updating the code enforcement language, how we can be more effective and have more effective code enforcement when needed. We're certainly, we're in a code enforcement process right now that is really very demanding. So that's always a challenge. A couple other things coming up, CEQA guidelines, we may have to look at preparing some local policy and CEQA standards for owls and another demand from the state, we have northern spotted owls are becoming more and more well-known in the Madrona Avenue neighborhood and that can affect how and how you go about permitting. And so we're finding some challenges there. And another thing is the state is requiring by 2020 that we have vehicle miles traveled thresholds and we're going to be working with TAM on their VMT countywide model and then how we can pull data out of that. That's something that is in discussion now and will probably have, have to happen a little ahead of the general plan update, but we're, we'll be working with them. So my other, other major overriding goal is to have a PowerPoint at this presentation next year and, you know, maybe use some familiar faces. We'll see what we can do. Any questions?
Okay, everybody, that's 11 minutes, that's a record for Neil. Do I have your PowerPoint next year, Neil?
Any other, any other questions from, from the council? Questions from the council?
Okay, so now we have Public Works.
Good evening. So this is my second opportunity to kick off a Public Works budget process with you. And if there's two things I learned last year, one was do not have the longest presentation of the night, so...
Thank you.
Safe. And then don't have the dullest presentation of the evening. Unfortunately, I got slotted right behind Neil, so I think we're all good. So I'm going to be brief. I've got 14 slides and I'm going to kick off talking a little bit about engineering and administration and then I'll hand it off to our maintenance superintendent, Bob Quinn, who will talk about what they do over in maintenance. So this is the same slide as we kicked off last year where it kind of shows the facilities that we maintain. If everything is going according to plan, this is more of Bob's role, doing the day-to-day maintenance of these things. But as our infrastructure gets older, then engineering becomes more involved in some of these things as they need to be rebuilt or reconstructed. So quickly going through some of the accomplishments in engineering this year, we finally awarded a contract for the Bonner Bridge replacement project. So you awarded a contract to Golden State Bridge about a month or so ago. We have our first meeting with them next week. We'll be coming back with some more information. Lot of questions about when are they going to start, what is it going to look like? And we do have, I'll remind everybody, a dedicated website that's been set up, bonnerbridge.com. So as we meet with the contractor, we get more information about their schedule and what they're going to be doing and when, we'll be populating that website and that'll be a good place for folks to go to stay up, up to speed on that project. In conjunction with City Manager's Office, we did do a lot of work this last year on the Measure B program and we have just recently put the expenditure plan together. We did share that at a public workshop, that's available on the website. I have a slide on that a little bit later on. And then as far as construction projects go, the photo here shows the work that is just about wrapping up on East of Francis Drake Boulevard. So as you may have heard, the third lane on the Richmond Bridge eastbound is scheduled to open this weekend. We have been doing a lot of work on East of Francis Drake to make improvements so that people can get to the bridge and don't get stuck in our traffic signals near Larkspur Landing Circle. We've made some pedestrian improvements as well as vehicle improvements in that corridor and they are working evenings this week to do some pavement repair and they will be striping, marking and putting signs up all the way through this weekend so that when the third lane's open on the bridge, the folks will be able to get to it.
One note, in meeting with TAM staff this week, I thought it was important to interject here that TAM staff had such praise for Julian and City of Larkspur staff in working on the East of Francis Drake project so that it is ready when the bridge third lane opens. And I just want to, want you to...
Thank you.
To tell you that they're, they were so impressed, pleased and thankful.
Okay, and TAM have been great to work with on this project and provided the bulk of the funding for it. Some other accomplishments, so we secured two grants this year. One was a PTAP, which is for evaluating our pavement. The other is a TDA, Transportation Development Act. Talk a little bit about that grant a little bit later, but just under $200,000 for that grant money coming in. We've been doing a lot of work with FEMA, as has Kathy and her staff, to try and get reimbursed for all of the expenses that we incurred with the storms last year. We've submitted paperwork and told we've been authorized for $155,000 in reimbursement. We haven't seen it all come in yet, but it's trickling in in various checks. And then we are in the midst of upgrading our electric vehicle charging stations over at Piper Park and the CNPA parking lot with newer upgraded models that'll actually be dual-headed, so we'll end up with six places to charge electric vehicles in that location. And again, that's partially funded by a TAM grant. This is the Measure B expenditure plan that is available on the website. If you go to the city's website and you go to the fixing our roads link, this map pops up. It's color-coordinated, that shows four years of planned street repaving. And then for folks that want to delve in a little bit more, there's a spreadsheet that goes along with this that lists the exact limits of the work and what the proposed treatment is, the length of the street, the area and things like that. So this will be up on the website. This was the same map that was shown at the workshop we had on the 10th of this month. And then we are currently scheduled to come back to City Council and have you look at and adopt that expenditure plan on May 2nd. So some goals for next year, so we have some capital projects that kicked off this year that should be in construction in the next fiscal year. One is our local streets pavement that's out to bid now. So this is the last of the Measure C-funded projects. So this is Riviere Circle, some streets in Palm Hill, a section of Murray and some of the streets downtown that we are doing in conjunction with the PG&E work. The Cordaleo Storm Drain is actually on Villa La Paz, but it's replacing a storm drain that failed. It was on Cordaleo. That's going to be combined with the pavement project also going out to bid. Doherty Safe Pathways to School is a project we've already put out twice previously and could not get good bids. We plan to combine that this summer with the two grant-funded projects to put flashing lights on Magnolia and package that as a bike and pedestrian improvement project and get that out to bid and get that constructed this summer. And then Niven Park Improvements is looking to do playground improvements and some fencing and some ADA improvements over at Niven Park. Villa Lacumbre Slide Repair, this is a result of the storms last year and so while FEMA has been reimbursing us for all of our out-of-pocket expenses during the events, they have not yet committed to funding for the permanent repair here. And so that's, when we come forward with our capital program, at one of the subsequent meetings, this project will show up as unfunded or partially funded and that's why it has an asterisk in this, in this list. It's a project we feel we need to do, we just haven't figured out the funding yet. Hopefully FEMA comes through. If not, we'll be coming to you with a funding plan for it. And then as Nick mentioned, we'll be working with parks on some improvements at Piper Park, the tennis courts and the volleyball courts. And then some projects that won't quite be ready for construction, but we'll definitely be working on them as far as the development goes next year. We have some downtown improvements, downtown ADA improvements that are needed. Again, we're just in the concept stage of that, so we don't have a funding plan for what it's going to take to implement all of those measures in the downtown. We're working with Flood Zone 9 on the funding for a Hillview Storm Drain and so we've already done some topo serving. We're going to be working on the concept designs for replacing the storm drains in Hillview. Those storm drains will then go to the pump station that's going to be installed as part of the bridge. And then potentially three Measure B projects. The plan at the moment is to do all of the concrete work, all of the required ADA improvements, all the wheelchair ramps in one contract upfront. And then if you remember the color drawing, two of those colored sections would be our first-year project. So we'd have a paving project and then an ADA project. And then based on some of the feedback we got from some of the folks on some of the streets that weren't going to be paved till the end of the, of the plan and the amount of work, as you'll see in Bob's presentation, that they have done patching potholes, it makes sense to use some of that Measure B money to do some more extensive, robust patching on some of our streets that don't get paved until year three or four. It'll just be more cost-effective, it'll be better in the interim and it'll save our guys a lot of handwork. And then the last one is a Redwood Highway Bike Facility. So we've been working with TAM on the North-South Bike Way. They're looking at a project that would put a bike facility on the old railroad tracks behind the Trader Joe Shopping Center, but we feel there's a need to improve the bike facilities on Redwood Highway itself too, so we'll be looking at how to develop a project there. Some of the goals moving forward also include completing our Storm Drain Master Plan. So this has taken a little bit of a back burner as we've been working on Measure B, but we've certainly brought it up to the point where we've identified areas where we think we're going to have an issue and those streets have been pushed to year four in the plan. So we've been working on it, but haven't been able to finalize it. And again, continue to work with TAM on the other segments of the North-South Greenway. And then along with the bridge come five mitigation projects. And so now that the bridge has been awarded and we know it's moving forward, we'll be kicking off the completion of the design on those five mitigation projects, which is the docks, the dog park, a tidal marsh and some stormwater improvements on Magnolia. And then also some kind of citywide issues that we're looking to handle. This is in response to some of the public service requests. We log every request that comes in, we get over 400 a year. And so this is kind of some of the common themes that come out of there. We have folks asking about, as you heard tonight at the podium, some traffic calming that some of the neighborhoods are interested in and then also policies of where we have crosswalks and where we don't need crosswalks and where we want enhanced crosswalks and flashing lights. And then similarly with sidewalks, some neighborhoods want sidewalks, some neighborhoods don't. And then a policy for when we have new projects and if we look at including sidewalks or when we have redevelopment on a individual homeowner basis, whether we're conditioning them to have sidewalks or not. So that's the engineering side of things. We're going to hand over things to our maintenance superintendent, Bob Quinn.
IR last? Lovely. Well, I will make this very brief. It broke, we fixed it, it's done. No, anyway, our park maintenance, I have four personnel assigned to park maintenance. Shows, they do all the routine maintenance, manage all the irrigation systems, which is a very important part of what we do. It's a lot of money involved in buying water. Install the donated benches, Rita runs that program. We do all the installations for her and that's been a very popular program. Median Island Maintenance and replant, replanning and that'll be one of the accomplishments this year. And Winter Storm Responses. For accomplishments over in parks, we, our whole crew, all six guys, finished repairs this summer. I haven't quite gotten, I don't know, I'm in between two.
Okay, great. You had it, 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 you had it. You've forgotten to click.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
They're trying to help you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll hurry up. We spent most of our summer finishing repairs from last year's storm damage. We did an extensive pothole repairs. We continued to work on our irrigation systems. We did a large renovation project on the softball fields, the infield's and the outfield's and some more work on the soccer field over at Piper Park. We ended up putting in over 200 cubic yards of material over there to do that work. Over in streets, there we go, we did pothole patching. And that's not a typo. We did a lot of pothole patching. I have two guys assigned to streets and facilities maintenance. Occasionally I'll bring one from parks over to help. We did accomplish all our scheduled curb painting and striping. We were able to get the Bonner Bridge area professionally striped to get it through this last winter, which was huge. And we did some extensive storm drain cleaning, inspection and video in anticipation of our Storm Drain Master Plan and ahead of the paving project, which was a large portion of my budget and a huge undertaking. Let's see. Let's see. Ah, well, it must be done. Oh, there we go. We did for potholes over 500 individual repairs, used 12 tons of material, all put in by hand. So, as Julian said, the patch paving is going to really help us not have to spend our staff time on that. Let's see. Other accomplishments. Challenges, we're sort of short staffing throughout the year. I've been using contract help to fill in. I really only have four full-time employees right now. The amount of storm damage that we suffered last winter took up a lot of our time this summer, and vegetation management's always a big one for us. So, my goals next year for maintenance are full staffing, a more concerted effort to provide training for staff, and this budget has more money put into training to do that. Continue inventorying our assets and developing preventative maintenance programs for them, and continue as much as possible to become less reactionary and more scheduled routine. That's it. So, did you run all that up there?
Um, no.
Done. Drop the mic, we're done. If you have any questions?
Questions of Bob from the council? Questions of Bob from the public? Thank you very much.
I want to say thank you. I think the medians are looking wonderful. We have lots of potholes that have been fixed. It's just, this, I get nothing but compliments from, to all of you about how well-run Larkspur is, and I'm so proud to be part of the council and part of the, of the team. So, it's, it's a delight to hear what everyone just said, and, and I appreciate all the hard efforts all of you put in. It's amazing. So, I'm really happy and proud.
Well, I think you speak for the council with those remarks. And also, I also want to follow up and say how often I get compliments on how quickly the responses are to people calling in about potholes and things.
Thank you.
That's, that's really amazing.
We have some on my street, but you can keep them there because it's really slowing the traffic down. Maybe that's what you need on Villa Lacumbre, more potholes.
Don't say that. You know, they're going to find what they're looking for.
Not sure that's what they're looking for, but appreciate the humor.
Yeah.
All right.
Dan, what did staff you have?
Yes, and we're a very, very fortunate, strong team, and...
And the stamina.
Yes. I think, I think most of the staff is up past his bedtime.
And the support. Because you're making Larkspur look so great, by the way, everyone, most people want to live here now, so it's a sought-after city to live in.
All right. Are there further discussions or considerations the council should make on this item?
No, I appreciate the staff for their present, giving the presentations. It gives context for upcoming budget discussions where we tend to get lost in the numbers sometime and forget the projects and the people behind the numbers, so.
And in our white-hearted attempts at, at getting through the evening, we don't want to convey that we don't have the optimum appreciation for all the hard work and creative efforts that go on here. We know that you make the most of many challenges and working together, you make more than you would individually, and we want you to know, we appreciate that. We're here for you.
I'll go home.
All right, we're getting close to our pumpkin time here, so...
We have one more thing to do. I think it can be pretty quick.
And we will now recess as the City of Larkspur City Council, and we will convene as the City of Larkspur Parking Authority. And we have a staff report on item 10.1, the formation of Larkspur Public Financing
Thank you to the council, which is now sitting as...
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
So, you're now sitting as the directors of the Larkspur Parking Authority, which has sat dormant for many years and is re-energized this evening. And I want to thank and acknowledge Mark Pressman, who has stayed all night in case you have any questions on this procedure. As was discussed already, a city council meeting that you may be familiar with, the city council of City of Larkspur voted to form a joint powers authority, which is the Larkspur Public Financing Authority, and is hoping that the Larkspur Parking Authority, which is what you're sitting as now, will join in, in that effort by approving the attached resolution which would authorize execution of the joint powers agreement, effectively forming the Larkspur Public Financing Authority. And that is the action we're asking of you this evening, and turn it back to you.
Are there questions of staff on the staff report?
Just, just one quick question. After we do what we're doing today, will, will we have to take any further action administratively in terms of the joint powers agreement?
No, not administratively, but I have to double-check. You may have some procedural matters as the financing authority when we first form it that relate to the JPA. But, the parking authority is essentially done, correct? File, yes. Yes, but that'll be part of what happens when you approve the resolution, is that we'll have to file, that there's now a joint powers authority called the financing authority.
Okay. All right, are there members of the public that have questions or want to make comments on this agenda item? Seeing that, I'll bring them back to the council. We have a recommendation to approve a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a joint exercise of powers agreement by and between the City of Larkspur and the Parking Authority of the City of Larkspur, creating the Larkspur Public Financing Authority. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve Resolution Number 01/18 of the Parking Authority of the City of Larkspur.
Thank you, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now adjourn as the City of Larkspur Parking Authority and reconvene as the City of Larkspur City Council and adjourn the regular meeting in memory of two valued individuals. First is Larkspur Walker Mary P. Kiernan. And two, we will adjourn in memory of our valued city managers, dear father, Richard R. Schwartz of San Francisco.
Need a second?
I need a motion.
Oh, all right. Oh, so moved.
I'll second it.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Pressman, for sticking it out.
Yes, and you didn't yawn. At least I didn't.